I was just making sure to deal with this. Right for you, Laura. I thought she was still there first. Just looking out for you.
Oh. I didn't think it was gonna work. Or possibly like...
My eye, my eye is totally fine. Just get it in the back of your head.
You don't want to... Shoot, but I would like that question. That's all I'm gonna like.
I'll look at that. I think, I think there's definitely an... Is it the right direction? Is that it? He's... And he tried it.
Yeah.
I will have that. It's... I think it was good. I'm gonna make sure. That's great.
I know. So she is...
Thanks. Okay. Yeah. We're gonna go through...
I don't know about that.
So excited about the end of the video. It's actually pretty good. You saw it. It's pretty good. It's pretty good. Pretty good. Yeah. You always done this to Moscow. I already rolled.
Oh, that's one. Yeah.
I can't remember. Uh... Did you order anything?
What do I want? Six. We ordered five, which means wrap. Oh, you ordered... It's very...
Oh, okay.
No, so good, but not the whole, but the wrap.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yeah. That yours? Yep.
Oh.
She can't show you. She's... Wait. How's it going? It's just for that. I mean, I...
Good evening. I call this April 9, 2024, meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching recording in this meeting. On April 19, the video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.morrisvillnc.gov/government. Sergeant Laurie Strickland is our Sergeant in Arms this evening's meeting. We thank you for your attendance. At this time, I'd like to recognize that Councilmember Ann Reba is not feeling well, so she will not be with us this evening. And that was my fault that we're starting a couple minutes late. I apologize. I got caught in traffic, so go figure. That happens sometimes. At this time, Councilmember Rao will deliver the invocation.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Before I deliver this evening's invocation, I just want to say a word of prayer. We'll be honoring later tonight for our former colleague, Steve Deal, who passed away a few weeks ago. We pray for his wife, Barbara, who's here tonight, and the entire Deal family, and thank him for his dedicated service to the town of Morrisville. This invocation is based on a speech I gave at UNC Holy Moly this weekend. Some of the scripts are used for my indication. As we gather, pray by your heads in prayer. As we gather over the past few weeks, we celebrate the vibrant Festival of Holy. We are reminded of the beautiful tapestry of colors that represent the diversity, joy, and unity of humanity. We are blessed every day to see this tapestry before our very own eyes, this inspiring mosaic of diversity in Morrisville, an everlasting reminder that all of us, regardless of where we come from, can be a part of this vibrant democracy. Holy is not just a festival of colors, but a celebration of love, forgiveness, and triumph of good over evil. It transcends boundaries, bringing people together regardless of their backgrounds, beliefs, or differences. During this suspicious occasion, we pray for peace to prevail in every heart and every corner of the world, unity among all communities, fostering understanding, respect, and harmony, happiness and joy to fill our lives with laughter, love, and positivity, forgiveness to heal wounds, mend relationships, and nurture compassion, and hope for a brighter future where everyone is treated with dignity, equality, and kindness. May the colors of Holy inspire us to embrace diversity, spread love and happiness, and create a world filled with peace, unity, and goodwill for all. Bless us with your grace, guidance, and blessings as we embark on this joyful celebration together, and may our hearts always be filled with love, warmth, and gratitude. For as we come off Easter, Holy, and Ramadan holidays, let us always remember that these holidays remind us that in the midst of the greatest darkness, there is always light. There is always hope that good will prevail over evil. Amen. Om Shanti.
If you're able, please stand. Pledge of allegiance?
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt this evening's agenda, it's our responsibility to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they want to share? I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
I move that we adopt this evening's agenda.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rao and a second by Mayor Pretam Garamella to adopt this evening's agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, six zero. There is one item on this evening's consent agenda, Budget Capital Project Ordinance Amendment. Does anyone have any questions about that before we go ahead and adopt? Okay. I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second by Mayor Pretam Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, six zero as well. We have four proclamations on this evening's agenda. A proclamation honoring the life of former Councilmember Stephen Deal, a proclamation honoring the life of former Councilmember Tet Walton, a proclamation recognizing Parkinson's Awareness Month, and a proclamation recognizing Earth Day. I will read the first proclamation, then invite Steve's wife Barbara to come forward to accept the proclamation and take a few photos. This is honoring the life of Stephen A. Deal, 1942 through 2024. Whereas Stephen Anthony Deal was born in New York City, New York, in 1942, and whereas Mr. Deal moved to Morrisville, North Carolina in 2001 with a desire to serve and became an active member of the community for 23 years, and whereas Mr. Deal made meaningful contributions to the town of Morrisville through his appointments to the Land Use and Transportation Plan Advisory Committee and the Tree Preservation Ordinance Advisory Committee, and whereas his charitable spirit guided him to become a founding member of the Morrisville Community Foundation, making possible grant opportunities for organizations to give back to local communities, and whereas in December 2009, Mr. Deal was officially elected to the Town Council of Morrisville, North Carolina. He served faithfully for four years with a wonderful sense of humor and a love for all things Morrisville until December 2013. And whereas, through his role as a town council member, he would draw inspiration from his years of experience as a human resources professional and became a strong advocate for town staff, often highlighting retention and recruitment in efforts to better position the town to serve a growing population. And whereas, while in office, he worked to champion the implementation of a stormwater program, efforts to improve street and facility maintenance, and plans that supported a welcoming small-town environment. And whereas, Mr. Deal continued with his wife Barbara by his side to serve the town of Morrisville after his term ended in 2013 by working to enhance the lives of all Morrisville residents. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville hereby extends our sincere sympathy for the loss of Stephen Anthony Deal to his family and will forever be grateful for his contributions to the town of Morrisville, adopted this 9th day of April, 2024. Steel, if you'd like to come forward, I'd like to give this to you. Sure. You doing okay? It's so good to see you. Would you like to say a few words? Would you like to say a few words?
I would.
Okay, please.
I know Steve would be very honored for this, but he would come down and haunt me if I didn't say something about how great the town staff is and how much he loved not just the town of Morrisville, but the town staff and the people who worked for the town.
Okay. Thank you very much for doing that. Would you mind if we had the whole council come up for a photo with you? Would that be okay? You guys want to come forward real quick?
It's okay with Mr. Deal.
It's okay. We'll all get a picture with you. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, come on up. I'm here with you. Do you want Marty up here with you?
You're talking into my deaf ear, so.
Okay. Do you want Marty up here with you too?
Marty, come on.
Want to come up?
No, no. Come on.
She'd like you up here.
Come on. She's an important part of the town, too.
Yes, she is.
She works hard for the town.
Why don't you come on the other side of her right here? As always, you let us know what we can do to help, okay?
Anything. If I need any help, I will call. You know me, I'm not shy.
Okay. It's great to see you. Thanks for coming out tonight. Thank you, Artie. Appreciate it. At this time, Councilmember Liz Johnson will read the next proclamation. Then we will have a moment of silence in honor of our previous council members. At that time, we will invite Jack Walton and Annie Walton Wyatt to come forward and accept the proclamation as well as take a couple of photos.
Okay. This proclamation is honoring the life of Emma Tet Walton. Whereas Emma Tet Walton was born on August 19, 1927, in Morrisville, North Carolina, and was a grandchild of the founding fathers of Morrisville, and one of the founding fathers of Morrisville. She grew up during the Great Depression and always appreciated the value of hard work, being self-sufficient and financially responsible. And whereas Tet was elected as the first female official to serve on the town board of commissioners in the town of Morrisville. She was voted into office in December 1975 and served until December of 1981, and quickly became known as a consensus builder. And whereas Tet was instrumental as a member of the town board, working with developers, bringing commerce and jobs to Morrisville, in addition to working towards negotiations in securing municipal water for the community. She was an essential figure in laying the foundation for collaboration with Morrisville's prosperity and was once quoted, "We all have to put aside our differences and work together to get things done." And whereas in her life and times in Morrisville, Tet was always a well-known historian of the town of Morrisville and loved sharing its rich history through memories and a plethora of photos. She served faithfully on the Historic Crossroads Committee until 2008 and was a strong voice behind the restoration of the old historic Christian church. And whereas her compassion and love of Morrisville flowed through her family, with her husband being a chartered member on the development of the first Morrisville Fire Department Station, and her son being one of the longest-serving members of the town's Board of Adjustment. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville hereby extends our sincere sympathy for the loss of Emma Tet Walton to her family and will forever be grateful for her contributions to the town of Morrisville.
Want to call for a moment of silence?
And we'll just take a moment of silence. Okay. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, with us tonight are Emma's two children, Jack Walton and Annie Walton Wyatt, and I'm gonna meet them at the mic so I can hand them this proclamation. And I told, I told Annie she is welcome to say anything she wants, but before, well, she's the. No, no, we'll let Annie talk. We'll let Annie talk today. But just to, I just want to say a few words. I knew your mom for probably 24, 25 years, and I was honored to call her a friend, honored to gain so much knowledge from her. She was so generous in sharing of her time and experience, and I benefited greatly. And as you all heard from the proclamation, she was instrumental in what we have here today in the town of Morrisville. She, she laid the foundation for where we are today. And as you heard the proclamation, back in the day, the council, it was not called the Town Council, it was the Board of Commissioners, and she was the first female elected official in the town of Morrisville. And it's, well, Anna's not here tonight, but we have a majority female council tonight, and we owe a lot to Tet to where we are today, not just for that, but for so many things. So I want you both, Jack and Annie, to know how much we appreciate both of you for your service to the town of Morrisville, and obviously appreciate your love so much, and we share our deepest condolences to the town of Morrisville. So please, you two, very well.
I have to say that we're very appreciative of the town, and I want to say also that our mom's office, the time she stood in office serving this town, was a monumental piece of her life. To give you a slight implication of what happened during her service, when I got married in 1972, we were really good at campers' June. There were less than 200 people, 200 residents that were still in Morrisville. Does anybody know how many residents there are here now? 35,000. All right. That, that, I set the whole. We appreciate that, and this is, this is really, I think, that we're still doing.
Councilmember Rao will read the next proclamation, and council will invite Marty Howard from the Parkinson's Foundation to come forward to receive the proclamation.
This is, proclamation is recognizing Parkinson's Awareness Month, a disease that affects over a million people in the United States of America today. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease and affects approximately 1 million people in the United States. And whereas there is an estimated 30,000 people living with Parkinson's disease in the state of North Carolina, and 90,000 new people are diagnosed each year in the United States with Parkinson's disease. And whereas Parkinson's disease is the 14th leading cause of death in the United States according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. And there is no objective test for Parkinson's disease, and there is no cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim April 11, 2024, as Parkinson's Day, and the month of April as Parkinson's Awareness Month, and encourages residents, volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals to support and raise awareness for those living with Parkinson's disease and their families. T.J. Colley, Mayor of Morrisville County, and their clerk, Michelle Parker, Evans. I will now ask Mr. Howard to come here so I can present this proclamation to you. As you're coming up here, I want to thank Segwin Miller and the Parkinson's. As you're coming up here, I want to thank Sigmund Miller and the Parkinson's Foundation for reaching out to me to present this, for, to present this proclamation. I just want to say that I have, through personal connection, this disease has took flight with my mother, my grandmother, my mom's mother, and my, one of my dad's best friends. And so I just pray for any family out there suffering, I want to thank your population for doing it again, to help cure diseases, but also provide support and resources for families. Thank you for reaching out to us.
Councilmember Donna Fender will read the next proclamation, then we will invite Morrisville Environmental and Stormwater Committee member Jim Simmons to come forward to receive the proclamation and take a couple of photos.
All right, this is a proclamation recognizing April twenty-second as Earth Day. Whereas Earth Day was first celebrated on April twenty-second, nineteen seventy, and whereas April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four will be the forty, fifty-fourth anniversary of Earth Day. And whereas new and continuing challenges, including climate change, pollution, sea level rise, and loss of forests, wetlands, and other wildlife habitats, reinforce the need for adequate protections for the air we breathe, the water we drink, and the land we inhabit, and the animals we live alongside. And whereas there is scientific consensus that climate change poses a dire threat to our planet and its inhabitants, and that urgent and unprecedented changes are needed to mitigate its worst effects. And whereas Earth Day reaffirms our responsibility to the global effort to combat climate change and protect our planet for all. And whereas all species play a unique role in the complex web of life and contribute to the ecosystem surfaces on which all life on Earth depends. And hence, protecting biodiversity is crucial to the survival of this planet and its inhabitants. And whereas climate change impacts, increased and intensified deforestation, wildfires, floods, rising seas, diseases, droughts, and extreme weather. And whereas it is imperative to recognize and understand alternative ways of thinking about sustainable living and solutions. And whereas it is more important than ever to call for a unified global response and to cooperate regionally and internationally to defend the environmental progress that has been heretofore gained. Now therefore, the town council of the town of Morrisville does hereby recognize April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four as Earth Day, and encourages all residents, businesses, and organizations to participate in Earth Day education and activities surrounding the themes selected by Morrisville Environment and Stormwater Committee. Water, you know about H two O. On Saturday, April twentieth, in conjunction with the Western Wake Farm Market, from eight AM to twelve PM. Signed by the mayor, TJ Colley. So Jim, you want to come up here and hit this and also say a few words about the event you have planned?
Well, we've got a great event coming up on the twentieth. We hope you all attend, we've got about ten information booths, maybe have a dozen, a record turnout for market vendors. With this event coming up, it'll be wonderful for the kids and everybody to take a part in. And passport activity that goes on with the parking market will be a lot of fun, I enjoy it. Both of us who serve on the, the best committee realize that we've got a tremendous town here, and we really like it. We're glad to serve, we appreciate the staff, the items put together, fire chief, our police chief, public works director. We really have a tremendous town here, and we're very pleased to serve. And thank you all, members of the council, and Mayor Howard for helping us honor our birthday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So now we have two presentations on this evening's agenda. A Franklin Upchurch Senior Street Dog Park Project Update and a Fire Department Presentation. We invite Kyle Cooper, Capital Project Manager, to come forward to share the first presentation.
Thank you for the very nice introduction, I appreciate it, so. So again, thank you all for your time tonight. This is just to kind of be twofold, give you all a recap of what we presented back in August of twenty twenty-three. It's been a hot minute, so to get you back up to speed. And then kind of share with where, what we've done, what we currently have, and where we aim to move forward from there. So let's see if I can, oh, there's you. So for a brief project background, we started developing a conceptual plan for the dog park as well as an initial estimate for what that might cost over the year of twenty twenty-two. We settled on the Franklin Upchurch Senior Street location as the preferred location for the project. And moving into spring of twenty twenty-three, Camly Horn was brought on board to develop the detailed design and the construction documents for the project. We selected the preferred concept over summer of twenty twenty-three, and we presented that preferred concept to town council in August of that year. Moving forward, we had, we worked with the design team, the town staff, and our estimator on call to continue developing the designs and do a value-engineered plan to try and meet the budget goals of the project. And that took place over from late twenty twenty-three to March of twenty twenty-four. As of this, as of March twenty twenty-four, the plans are at fifty percent construction document level, and we're looking at ways to continue to move forward with those. But before that, we wanted to present what we had to you all today. So let me move on to the next slide. Just as a brief recap of what the previous plan was that we presented, overall design and construction cost estimate of this layout was estimated by Camly Horn at around nine hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred, with some of the optional additional amenities that were discussed at that time at around two hundred and two thousand. So brief overview of the site elements, you've got a little over an acre of fenced dog space, sidewalk connected to the dog park area from the parking lot. Twenty-seven spaces of poking on site, an entry plaza, drinking fountains, shade structures, a proposed flex program area, as well as a connection to the Crafty Creek Greenway. We've also got double-gated entrances with concrete pads for entrance into the large and the small dog park areas. And then lastly, we had a stormwater management system to help treat all of the runoff for that. So that was what we started with. The next slide will show what we, what we're currently at with value engineering and after meetings with the various departments and stakeholders. So we've reduced the parking count from twenty-seven spaces to seventeen spaces, and removed the secondary driveway on site. We've also removed the stormwater treatment ponds since reducing the amount of asphalt on site led to less of an overall disturbance. So there's no need for stormwater treatment due to the lack of disturbance on there. The shade structures will be included as optional, and we will discuss that in a further slide in on the presentation. In addition, we, we talked with Camly Horn multiple times to allow more trees to retain within the large dog play area to try to increase the shade on site. So you're seeing, you're seeing a bit more pockets of larger trees. Those are specimen trees that are in the little round, the little round fencing, like little round symbols on there. So we've also removed a couple of redundant sidewalk connections in order to help kind of save on asphalt in impervious space, in impervious surfacing. So this slide is just kind of a, just kind of a simplified rehash on that. I've also highlighted where the proposed fencing would be on there. Immediately, this plan is now at the greatest for showing all the different lines with all the hatching, but we wanted to try to simplify that to give you all a bit of a better overview. So parking lot, maintenance access, small dog play area over here, large dog play area over here with the proposed entry plaza and connector to the Crafty Creek Greenway. So next slide is getting into the costs of the different plans above. The previous estimated construction costs, as I mentioned, were nine hundred ninety-six five hundred. With the additional project options that we discussed, just a little under one point two million. So that was where we started in August of twenty twenty-three. We reached out to Thirty-Five North and got an updated cost estimate in March fifteenth of twenty twenty-four based on that value engineering plan that we showed, that I showed you all. That is, so this, that comes in at around one million two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That is the base cost, and that does not include these additional project options that we are listed here. So if you wanted to expand out to full, back to full parking, that would be about eighteen thousand. Doing five-foot-tall decorative black aluminum fences would be about ten thousand. Shade sales, they're estimating about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for shade sales on site. And if you wanted to do additional lighting in the dog park area, roughly seventeen thousand dollars. And then doing electrical wiring for gate access and doing a key fob to get into the site, would put you at around ten thousand. So that's about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars estimated for all those project options, which would put the total construction cost at about one point four seven, one point four, one point four seven five million. We also reached out to Public Works and got an annual maintenance cost for the overall design of about seven hundred thousand dollars per year. Seventy, sorry, seventy thousand, my apologies, so. So just to recap, the main differences between the original and the current design are, we removed ten parking spaces and the stormwater control measure, as well as the second driveway access. We also removed any of the superfluous sidewalks. And in return, we added some additional tree save, increased the undisturbed area on site, decreased the impact, like stormwater impact on site, and also added more natural shade opportunities within the, within the dog park. So moving on, this, this slide shows the overall project budget versus the project cost. So original budget was one million dollars. The current design costs that we have for professional services are a little over a hundred and eighty-one thousand. Latest construction estimate by Thirty-Five North for the base cost, one two eighty, one million two hundred and eighty thousand. And the additional project options, a hundred and ninety-five thousand. So all in all, that would put the total current project estimate of design and construction at about one million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars altogether. So. For the next steps, over this month, we are going to have Camly Horn proceed with developing the a hundred percent construction documents based on that plan. And then from May to June, we're allowing some time for that to go through permit review and the plan review process with our departments to make sure that everything is good to go. And once we get approval on that, our aim is to start bidding and getting a budget ordinance amendment and award contract over the months of August to September, and start construction in October with a duration of ninety days altogether. So. Our staff recommendation, as I mentioned, is to complete the a hundred percent design and develop the final cost estimate prior to bidding, so that we have an accurate snapshot of how much we anticipate all of that to cost. And then we will bid the project as value-engineered, as the base bid, including the optional items that are elected by you all. And then we will allocate the funds to bridge the gap between, with the current budget, as well as explore the possibility of sponsorship opportunities to offset the costs for the construction. And then once we have the, once we have a contractor from the bid, we'll award the project and start with construction as quickly as, as quickly as we are able. And lastly, we would consider, we can consider an early completion bonus to try to expedite the project construction, as I know time is of the essence to try to get this built, so. That is it for the presentation, but I'd like to open the floor to you all for any questions or comments.
I'd like to recognize Mayor Pretem Garamella, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Thanks, Kyle, for the presentation. Can you go back to the slide of the costs?
Uh, this one?
No, the one before.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay, this one. Go that, just, just, there you go.
So the cost of one point two, you know, you said value engineering, so, but what are we really getting in there? And the cost split of each of those components that contribute to making it one point two mil?
I apologize, the acoustics aren't that great in here, so.
Now, my mic is on, so. All right, so the question that I'm asking is, one point two eight million dollars, which is the latest construction cost. Now, you did all the value engineering, what are we getting out of that particular one? You know, then I wanted to go into the details of other stuff, because I don't see anything reference of what that one point two eight gets you.
Hi, councilmembers, Mark Spanioli, Director of Engineering, just to assist Kyle with some of the questions and answers. So that estimate is based on this, this image here. So, and then the, the specific details of it, in terms of what we, what we're reducing.
The specific details were?
This one, so.
I know what you're reducing, what I'm trying to ask is what is that nine hundred thousand cost, base cost, like in numbers? I wanted, what does, how does it contribute to that?
Oh, what, what, how do we come up with the nine hundred thousand?
Yes, so, so, so that, I didn't, I don't see a slide that talks about it.
We did not bring that information with us this evening, that was, that's something we'll have to first to you at a different time.
Okay, because for, for me, like, that is critical to have a discussion to what is getting added or what is value engineered into it.
So what I can help, possibly this description that I'll provide may help. So the image here on the screen is what we would consider the, the base dog park that we could deliver and still provide a, a dog park to the community that, that, that meets the community's requirements. It has a parking lot, it has an entry plaza, a small and large dog area, greenway connections. It, I don't, I don't think it gets any, any less than this in terms of, of scope and, and providing a, you know, dog park to the community.
So does this have lighting, is my question to it? Does it have water, you know, so, because I'm not seeing those details here other than the small. So that was the reason I was asking the nine hundred thousand.
There is, like, we have, we have Duke Energy lighting in the parking lot area itself.
No, not, not, I'm not worried about the parking lot, I'm worried about inside the park.
So that would be an additional, if you scroll down to the, like, sorry.
Forty-five thousand there.
So additional lighting in the dog park area, that is estimated at about seventeen thousand dollars in additional cost for additional light poles within the, within the, within the fenced-in zone.
So can you go a little up on the slide? So hold on, hold on, this one, just, just go up. So why does it say additional lighting in dog park area, forty-five thousand, and then additional seventeen thousand? So I'm confused as to what the whole picture is. What is, in forty-five, we are getting? How much additional seventeen, that is, is it covering? So it's, it's numbers all over, but doesn't tell what it is.
So the, just to clarify that, so the previous estimated construction costs were developed by the consulting engineering firm back in September, and that was the cost that they had estimated for those optional items. So once we moved further into the project, we had a construction estimating firm, that's what he refers to Thirty-Five North. They went ahead and did an updated estimate based on the drawings, and they also provided an updated cost estimate for each of those items. And that's why the next slide, you see things like that, where you have a forty-five thousand on one slide and seventeen thousand. Their, their estimated value or cost for that item was seventeen thousand, based on a contractor's estimate versus a design consultant.
Okay, so on page six, where it says a total construction cost of one point one nine eight, is what we last saw.
That's correct.
Okay, so that already included the forty-seven and all those things.
Right, so it was a, it was about nine hundred and ninety thousand, and then the council had elected to move forward with about two hundred and two thousand in options. So that's how we came to the one point two, that was back in August of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and now you're, the. Okay, and now you're, the additional projects, you're adding one ninety-five on top of one point. So from, so latest estimate is one point two eight zero. I, I can understand till there, because you're adding this one ninety-five thousand additional cost.
So the, so what happened, so just to kind of give a little bit more of a story. So after August, as we continued to develop drawings, we asked the construction cost estimating company to estimate the drawings that we had prepared. And actually, that, that number had escalated to almost one point five million dollars without options. That's when the town staff went back and started to value engineer the project, and that's why we showed you a project has less parking spaces, a couple of other things we reduced to. And even that base project, without these options shown here, is at one point two eight estimated by the construction estimator.
Yeah, and that is what is missing for me, like, you know, to understand, if you're saying it went to one point five and you value engineered to one point two eight, and then adding the additional things. So that's why I'm trying to understand what is value engineering, what are we missing out, and how did we come to one point six, so.
Let me see if I can, I mean, I think the best explanation I can give is, is sort of on this slide.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm gonna say, like, if I would, I would say, by removing the ten parking spots, how much cost is that? You know, by removing the storm, how much cost did you save? The second driveway, how much cost did you do? So the reason I'm, I wanted to see all those numbers is because is it what value there to? Value engineering or some things which are important, we can say, okay, that is important to have it. So that was the reason, like, I'm, I'm a little confused with this whole.
Okay, uh, that's a good, that's a good question. I think, I think some of the items we, we felt um, from a design perspective, were, were unnecessary. For, for example, the secondary driveway access, um, I, I think we would prefer to have the twenty-seven parking spaces, and, and we still don't think we really need the secondary driveway access, so that could save us some money there. Uh, the stormwater control measure had a value of about a hundred thousand. Um, and we felt that if we could, we could design and build the park without it, that it was a reasonable thing to save the money on, plus it saves on, on maintenance long-term for the town. And then the other items that we left in as options, uh, we felt from a parks and that design perspective made sense, like the, bring the parking lot back to the full, full size. Um, you know, the black aluminum fences, the shade sails, so those are the things that we put up here as options. The other items we felt weren't gonna make or break or, or make a better park um, in terms of functionality and, and, and user experience.
Okay, and this was, the value engineering was done from our staff, then what did Kim Lee Horn really do?
It was a collaborative effort. We did it together with Kim Lee Horn, uh, Parks Department, Public Works, so everybody worked together to come up with a strategy. And then they, they provided the um, the drawing modifications that we used to then go ahead and estimate off of.
And they did not come with that kind of value engineering from their side, so we had to.
They, they did. I think it was a, you know, I think we, we initially gave them direction for certain elements and certain things to, to be provided at the park, and then when the price started escalating, we were like, well, we've got to start cutting back. Um, and I think the fact that we made it a collaborative effort in terms of value engineering was the way to go for us, because we had to give the designers direction, what things we thought we could do without and what things we couldn't do without.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I'm asking this question because it's very confusing. Sometimes I need to have the pick. So total cost is one point four seven five, and then how did we come to one point six from there?
So that actually includes the, uh, that's the, so this is just construction costs on this slide? And then the total um, cost of one point six five is the total project cost, which includes design, consulting fees, et cetera, included, in, in addition to the construction costs.
So does it, is it not what you usually put it together as part of that project? Or you're just, you know, that's what, I'm not able to understand the construction costs or the design costs are not included into the cost of that one point one when you add it at the start?
They are. I think what, the reason why we separated is because at this point, we're, we're going towards the construction phase. So we were trying to just show you what, what figures we have upcoming versus what we've already kind of uh, encumbered or entitled us to, to spend. So the design fees, we've already kind of encumbered all that money, the hundred and eighty-one thousand shown in this chart. So now we're looking towards, moving towards the next phase, which would be the construction phase. That's the only reason why we really broke it up.
Okay, and my last question is, I'm not trying to be critical, but I have dogs and I like a dog park. I want it. It's our land, and the cost of this is almost coming to one point six five. And plus the value engineering that you guys have hauled down, if not, it will be more than two million dollars, right? Because you have cut down stormwater, you have cut down those kind of things.
We cut out about two hundred and fifty thousand though, with the value.
Yeah, exactly, so that's, that's good. So the estimates that we have hired, that, you know, the, what, like, the company that we have hired, right, uh, to give the estimates so that we are close to those numbers, like as part of your last budget. How much were they helpful to get you to this? Because something didn't go right, that the, we blew off the original estimates, right?
I think they were helpful. Uh, Kim Lee Horn developed it, developed the initial estimates uh, based on, on their experience uh, from a design perspective. Um, I also, I'll admit, I'm the eternal optimist. We, we haven't gone to bid yet, so we don't know what the.
But we have a third person, like, we have a third party, right, which basically does, so who are, who are they? What's their name?
They're called Thirty-five North, they're.
So Thirty-five North, they then not gave a real good estimate? Because now you're not going to bid yet, so you're estimating this is what it will come back, but we don't know what it will come back with, right?
We won't know officially until we go out to bid. That is correct.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just to, to frame this, there's the value engineered drawing that you showed us, and then there's the page of the amenities that we can choose to add. So is that pretty much what you need to hear from us tonight? Like, which of these items you'd like to be included in addition to that value engineered drawing?
That would be very helpful. Um, you know, we're just trying to also update you on the fact that the project costs have gone up.
Yep, we got that. Is there anything you want to share about what you see on this screen that you'd like to make sure is in the dog park? And then we can each just do that once?
Yeah, I think low-hanging fruits, you know, twenty-seven parking spaces, absolutely, you should go for it. Because you don't do that, then you lose out those parking spots. Um, I don't know what this five feet tall aluminum fences versus what we are currently having. I don't know that. So that's something I can't, hundred and forty shade sales is overkill, I feel. So, you know, if we can keep more trees, then that's a natural way. Additional lighting, I don't know what that really means. That's the reason I was asking. Like, you know, what is that forty-five thousand early covers? What is the additional seventeen thousand really covers? I would like to know more about it.
So ignore the forty-five, the number is now seventeen. So if you want lighting within the park, it's seventeen. Is that correct?
No, it's additional. That's what it says, additional lighting. So I don't know what that additional lighting means.
So let's get clar- clarification. Is the seventeen thousand just to light up the inside of the park?
Yes, the word additional part doesn't need to be there.
Yeah, so the forty-five is the past, that's not a real number, just seventeen.
Okay, then I will certainly go for lighting.
And key fob rather than just an open gate?
The key fob is important, because you know access point of view, like, who is in, who is out at time.
If, if I can make a somewhat of a staff recommendation, I would suggest all of these except the shade sales. It might be something that we can add later, uh, at a different phase. Uh, the shade sales are, are designed particularly around the um, the plaza, which is the circle entry feature. Once you're in the, once you're inside the park, there's plenty of shade from the trees that are naturally occurring.
So I'm okay with that recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Um, now, Councilmember Fender's been really patient, and Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
So do I get the same amount of time?
As much time as you need.
All right, um, so my, I lost power on my laptop right as we were starting. Um, but one of my questions was what the amount of value engineering was, and you said two hundred and fifty thousand?
Approximately.
Okay, um, so even, I'm just confirming, and I think I know the answer. Even with that value engineering, uh, two hundred and fifty being removed, the cost still went up.
That's correct.
All right, um. Uh, one of the questions I had on, um, can you go to the slide with the drawing of the site plan? Yeah, this one. Um, where, because the, well, on this uh, drawing, it's difficult to see where does Town Hall tee into Mooresville Carpenter on this drawing?
So, my apologies, so this is um, this is the stuff for the road here. So Town Hall Drive is to the north of, of that. So Mooresville Carpenter is, so you go up this road a little bit. Mooresville Carpenter is about where that, like, black bar, where the black bar on my screen is, give or take.
Okay. Um. So it then, um, if we were to go down this path, are we erasing the capability to ever extend Crabtree Creek Parkway?
I mean, from an engineering and construction perspective, anything can be done. Uh, we're not building any physical structures other than sidewalk or, or the greenway trail and a fence. And uh, to, that would be the only physical obstacles that we would have to remove, and we would certainly have to shrink the size of the large dog area considerably to accommodate the right-of-way.
So you would be losing, if we, if we went that far, we would be losing about everything to the left here. Like, right about where my cursor is, would have to be, I mean, it would be a lot thinner.
So is it worth designing it from the beginning with the Crabtree Creek extension in mind?
Um, I mean, we've thought about that in the initial design phases. I mean, I, I'll stand by my, it's, it's a the fence and a walkway that would need to be removed. I mean, I, I think we should take advantage of the scale of the property as it is now, but I mean, that's just a personal opinion.
Okay, yeah, I understand. Um, just when you needed to ask questions. And then, um, lastly, so in the options, can you go to the slide with the options? The options today. So why, um, how did we get from an eight-foot-tall fence to five foot?
Oh, that's a good question. I'll, I'll answer.
So we, so we, sorry, so we discussed the matter of the fence height with the different departments, and that boils down to roughly two main reasons, cost and aesthetics. Number one, trying, doing a five-foot fence versus an eight-foot aluminum fence is, is a, is fairly cheaper, like, just because of the height. And then secondly, from the aesthetics, an eight-foot-tall fence is literally, is taller than the um, than the doorway. So there was concerns about it looking like a jail versus a um, versus a dog park, so.
Yeah, I, I thought at one point in time in early discussions of the dog park, we discussed this item, and the council settled in on eight feet high, so.
I, I do recall that as well, and I think, I think the, there was some healthy discussion about that. We, we've also gone back and looked at a number of other uh, dog parks, not only in Wake County, but surrounding communities, and, and it, it seemed um, maybe overkill to have it that high, is all I can say respectfully. I'm not trying to be.
Okay, so you're saying um, other dog parks in the county, do they standardize on five feet high?
Yeah, in fact, some of them, like um, um, downtown Cary Park's only got a four-foot fence.
Okay. All right, um, so if we're weighing in on uh, options here, um, I definitely want to eliminate the shade sales. It's pretty counterintuitive to cut down a bunch of trees and then pay a hundred and forty thousand dollars to stick up sails for shade. So um, I think at least from the beginning, we eliminate that line item. If, you know, a year or two down the road, seems like we need to add that, we can later. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you for the presentation. I agree with Mayor Protem Garamella that it's helpful to know what is included and not just what's to be added. So at this time, there's no lighting inside the dog park unless we opt in to add lighting.
Yes, ma'am.
The fence that is provided now, what is it versus the five-foot-tall option?
It would be chain-linked. It would be like just the standard black chain-linked fence. So the aluminum would be more the vertical, would be more the decorative vertical slot style.
Ten thousand doesn't seem like a lot of money. It, it, the whole fence must be very expensive. If the difference between the two styles is only ten thousand.
Yeah, this is an up, yeah, upgrade cost.
Okay, um, was there any shading in the dog park area before it was value engineered, or was the shades always in the entrance area?
It, it was always considered really as a sort of an add, sort of an add alternate. So that was, that was the idea, it's like to add that on to the base cost, so.
With the redesign, is the second access point for the parking lot something we could add later?
That is correct.
Okay.
So you can add on ten spaces. The one caveat that it would incur with that, adding all the additional spacing could potentially lead to needing to add in stormwater treatment in for that additional impervious surfacing. So that, that could be, that's a bit of a trade-off for that, so.
I, I think you asked about the actual driveway connection. We could add the driveway connection later, yes.
Oh, my apologies. I thought you were mentioning the parking.
It's okay, it's okay, because I'm gonna ask about that too.
Either one is a yes.
Yes, yes. So about the additional ten spaces, I, I think it's gonna be more expensive to add ten spaces later, because everything's going up in cost. If we added twen- ten more spaces and we added more of a, a permeable or, you know, surface versus the, you know, impermeable surface, is that the same cost as an additional stormwater kind of thing? Because it, you lose land space when you have a stormwater, but if you can change the um, you know, the, the parking lot surface so that it can't, is no longer needed, just trying to understand if we get up against, we have to have stormwater, could we change the surface of the parking lot?
Yes, so we, we certainly appreciate the use of uh, um, pervious pavers and things like that, like we did at the historic Christian church. Uh, those come at a considerably healthy cost to do. Um, in reality, it would be more expensive to do that um, than to just go ahead and do a small pond um, by comparison. Uh, we're confident that um, adding the ten spaces without the secondary driveway connection wouldn't put us into the threshold of needing the stormwater control measure, so we can still save, keep that savings.
Okay. Um, I do think we need a, a key fob or some sort of security on the park uh, as we probably will charge a fee for use. And this is one way that we don't have to pay for an attendant or, or someone to monitor the usage as closely. We need lighting in the dog park. It does get dark sometimes early. I, I think the additional project options are necessary. The uh, shade sales would be the item I would um, be okay with postponing until we um, have more information or need.
Thank you, Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
I like the, the parking spaces. I always get concerned as we build new parks, whether we build enough parking. Because I look back at many of our parks, I feel like we didn't build enough parking, but I think twenty-seven's a good start. Um, I had some questions about the shade sales, but uh, yeah, I'd like to, you know, maybe actually see what those look like. It's a pretty significant price increase. Um, I'm fine with the lighting. I'm fine with the lighting in the dog park area. And, uh, you know, all in all, I mean, I, I, I've gotten so used, I think all of us have gotten so used to the cost going up for any project, just because of where we are with, you know, pricing.
Um, but, uh, you know, I think that this, I, I will say that, I think that, that this is really a project that many people across the town want. And so I think, um, I'm happy with, I'm not happy with the price, the cost going up, but, um, I, 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 I support this moving forward just because I feel like delaying it's not going to do any good and it's just going to make the cost go up further. So if you could get me some more informa, could you just repeat what the shade sales are again? From my knowledge, I just want to know what those are.
So the shade sales that were proposed by Kimmy Horn are, are more of an architectural shades sale. Not that they wouldn't provide shade, but they, they, um, they have large columns, uh, triangular shaped canopies. So, um, it's somewhat unique to this site. Well, I don't think we have any in Mooresville. Sometimes you see things like this over some large play areas and stuff like that, but I haven't seen any in Mooresville. But, um, so that's, that's why they, they come with a relatively healthy price. There are probably some, um, less expensive alternatives, maybe not as architecturally pleasing.
Okay.
And, and I, you know, I still think that's something that we could explore at a future phase. Um, we've spent, just for reference, we've spent a lot of time onsite, um, identifying ways to, to maintain the tree canopy as much as we can and still provide a ample space for the dogs to, to enjoy and the patrons to use. Um, and I think there's going to be a considerable amount of shade from the, from the natural pines and hardwoods that are there now, so.
That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
So, um, thank you for the presentation. Um, I know this probably was not, uh, the happiest of presentations you've ever brought before us because I'm not happy looking at it, quite frankly. So, and that you've heard, we're all a little concerned about how the, the price is escalating. So I really appreciate taking the time, that you all took the time to try to figure out how to bring the cost down as best you could. So, and maybe this question's been answered already, but the, these are just cost estimates. And you did say, we won't know the actual true cost until we put it out to bid. But we hired this company because we wanted to get as close to what we thought the bid would be. So are we confident in these, uh, uh, because I'm not confi, I, I'm really afraid the price is going to be even higher when we put it out to bid.
Um, I mean, we're relatively confident because this, this happens to be a general contracting firm. So their, their main business is construction. Um, they, they have a, a cost estimating arm that they use the data and the information because they're, since they're building things every day. So, I mean, we're relatively, this is based on true current market values. So we, we feel confident in, in the area that we're, we're in. So, um, we feel confident this is, this is in the right, right range.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate that. Um, of, of the, um, options you have listed here, I, I'm going to be in the minority. The only one that I think is an absolute must is the key fob use. We've talked about the fact that we are going to charge for use of the park. So you've got to have that key fob, um, option to, um, to at least generate some kind of revenue from, um, from the park. I, I would say the rest we could maybe add in later, but I think I'm in the minority here. I think you've heard, um, except for the, the, and I'm, I'm a no on the shade sales for sure. I mean, that definitely is something that could easily be brought in later. Um, I, I, I think, I'm, I'm just worried that the cost is going to escalate once we put it out to bid. And, um, and then what do we do? How, how do we, how do we pull back then? But, um, I think you've kind of, you hear a consensus and I'm, I'm fine with that.
We are committed to moving as quickly as possible. That's why we're trying to get this in the next couple of months permitted and out to bid, uh, so we can get this under construction as soon as possible. That way we can be as close to this estimate as possible. Um, I will throw out there also that the, the town just, uh, applied for a grant. Um, that we're, it's just an application for this project and, and about two hundred fifty thousand dollars worth. So, um, you know, we're hopeful that that, that will also contribute to the, to the cost of the park.
Thank you for that. And you did talk about sponsorship, so that, you know, there, there, I know you're looking at all options and I, I really appreciate that to, um, try to bring the cost down. But I think what we've heard before, none, none of these costs are going down. Um, so the more we wait, the more we delay, the, you know, the, the cost is just going to escalate even more. So, um, and I, I do believe this is a project that is, um, desired by this community. We, we've heard that repeatedly over the years and, um, you know, we need to, we need to move on it, um, but as, as best we can, I guess financially, so, thank you.
Yeah, I concur. I think we've heard consensus of your recommendation, which is all of these options except for the shade sales. And I support that. I really appreciate you taking the time to put together this presentation to help us get our minds around this. It was not a really straightforward thing which happened over the last few months. So really great job bringing this forward in such a way that we can keep this moving forward. Because as, uh, Councilmember Johnson said, this is something the residents want. And I'm very excited about it, I think we all are. So, um, I think, do you have what you need to just keep moving forward? Everything except for those shade sales?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Kyle.
Hold on, we have a follow up, Mayor Protem Garamella?
Yeah, Mark, so if you take out one point four, so it comes back to one point five, right? Like.
I'm sorry, what, I'm sorry, what's your question?
If you go down the slide below. So in that, if you take out one point four out of it, a hundred and forty thousand out of it, so it will come back to fifteen, one point five million?
Yes, yeah, you're saying in the, in the options, if we, yes, yes.
So that's what I want to be very clear now, it's come down to one point five as the final.
Yes.
Okay.
Good point, thank you.
Cool, thank you both.
Thank you.
And this time, we will invite Fire Chief Wazinski to come forward to share the next presentation. I mean, video, or mean something.
Good evening, Councilmember Eric, thank you for having me. I hope this next presentation provides you with a little bit more joy than the last one gave. Hopefully the video does as well. You're really going to like that.
Sorry, I thought the green light was on. I already got yelled at. Um, so, uh, thank you for having me. Uh, I hope this presentation shows you a lot of the success that the fire department has, has had over the last year, celebrates some of the initiatives that we're, uh, we're taking on, allowing us sort of to tell you what your fire department is trying to accomplish. One thing I want to note though is that I typically tell people that everybody below the line of the fire marshals from the battalion chief down work for a living. I would say some of a lot of the things that I'm going to show you, that's not necessarily true. Beyond the top name, everybody is working extremely hard. Uh, I tell people I don't have to work for a living because how hard those other individuals do. But in all sincerity, I think we're, we have a lot of engagement, we have a lot of hard work from the, from the, you know, we'd like to invert that, right? So the fire administration supports what staff is doing. They're doing an amazing job. Uh, so I really hope that we keep that in mind throughout the whole, the whole presentation. I think they're doing a great jo, job of driving the ship. So, a lot of the things that we've accomplished over the last year, I think, are huge rocks. Some of the things that we really, really needed to do as an organization, starting with our employee diversification. In two thousand and twelve, we had two individuals who worked for the fire department that were not white males. That sort of plateaued in the two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty. But we made a really sort of concerted effort to, to move our organization into the twenty first century. And we've done that in a lot of different ways. Obviously below that, it's through our academy. One thing that academy does is it gives, I say we open doors, we don't lower standards. And what that means is, is that we really, with an academy, can, 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 can advertise to, we can get individuals in the door. While we do that, we do that through our open houses. So in our academy, what we do is we advertise, we get individuals in, we have multiple open houses, we show them what the physical agility test is, we show them what it's like to be a firefighter. We made a recruitment video that really kind of demonstrated not what a typical recruitment video is, which is the fire and the trucks, but culture, the way of life, how everybody has a sense of belonging inside of the fire department, specifically our organization. And we'll talk about that belonging, uh, moving forward. Some of the other things we did is we worked on our succession planning. And we did that in multiple different ways again. We have so many committees inside the fire department. What that does is it allows tremendous engagement, allows everybody to take a part in building, uh, our equipment, building our trucks, working on our uniforms. And we do that through budget, so they have budgets that they have to execute. Our budget, um, development inside the fire department mimics the town so that, you know, we're decentralized, they, they work shift. Oftentimes, they don't get to see what fire administration does. And that really kind of limits the succession planning inside of our organization. But we're trying to be as transparent as possible and allowing everybody to sort of see what we do. So when they have the opportunity, it's not an enormous learning curve. It provides you with a lot of options with staff moving forward. Clearly, opening fire station three was huge. Relocating that fire station into town allows us to provide the services that we needed to, especially since our unincorporated areas are drying up, uh, west of, uh, fifty five. One of the things that you'll see in our call volume, and we could talk about this in the next few slides, is it actually created a little bit of a, I would say a leveling off of our call volume because we're not responding with Cary in so many ways west of fifty five. Ironically, what we're doing is we're still seeing that, what I talked about, uh, a couple of sessions ago, is our unit movement. So these little changes sometimes have these weird effects, but we're still growing tremendously, uh, from a call volume perspective, which we'll also talk about. Partner collaboration, we are working hard to partner with anybody that wants to move their services forward, our services forward. Uh, that includes our, uh, Wake County, uh, uh, fire services, doing a really good job with them. Clearly, our CAM partners are enormous partners. Um, we're, we're looking for anybody who wants to partner with some of our community risk reduction efforts. So we're looking for organizations that can help us move each other forward. So, one of the things that we also tried to work on is our officer, officer development program. What that means for us is you have to check off a book when you become a firefighter to move off of a probation. You have to check off a book and go through a sixty hour class to, um, to be a driver. Well, Lano, it's, it's ironic, not a lot of fire departments actually have some book or some formalization outside of just education or certifications that they have to do in-house. It is a really hard book, it's about ninety pages, but it really is empowering our officers to make sure they're comfortable making decisions. They understand what expectations are. They know what the core values and the mission statement and the strategic plan is from a town and a fire department's perspective. We're sort of coalescing all of that information and teaching in them that so that in the middle of night when we're all not around, they are empowered to make those decisions. Um, we'll talk about some of the other things in the officer development, uh, uh, program, uh, moving forward, but that is an, that is an enormous lift. I want to noted that, again, that was not just something that fire administration did. There was a lot of input from the fire staff on, on how to get that accomplished. We are definitely looking, we're not dumping our work on people, but we're really trying to get as many people in the fire department engaged in helping us, uh, uh, create these next, uh, um, documents, move these initiatives along. So some of the influences that we have moving forward, again, call volume, but it's things that go along with call volume, it's fuel costs. In two thousand and twenty one, we had a monthly fuel charge of about two thousand dollars. Last fiscal year, it went up to almost eight thousand. That fluctuation in monthly fuel costs is really hard for us to forecast, which budget hates. So they're like, how much are you going to spend on fuel? And we're like, well, we don't know. And they're like, well, that's not acceptable. So it's really hard to sort of forecast that. But when you integrate calls into that and you're trying to analyze call volume, that is difficult. Obviously, we talked about, um, apparatus costs, the reliability of our older trucks, they're aging. So how do we get that, um, rectified so that we have reliable apparatus? Clearly, we talked about staffing needs already, so, um, and our reliance on CAM partners, we're relying on our CAM partners to come in. So these are all influences that are, that are, that are, that are, we're trying to, uh, pay attention to in our organization. Again, employee recruitment and retention, we're always looking at, say, competitive with, uh, uh, Western Wake County Fire Departments. It is, I would say in two thousand and ten, you would have very little, uh, turnover in the fire department. We had four hundred people applying for every one position. That's just simply not a reality in the public safety world nowadays. So we have to pivot and sort of take on a more, uh, uh, a more, I would say, you know, um, business mindset where we can't just rely on the fire department come work for us. We now have to work harder to recruit and retain staff. And again, we're doing that in multiple, uh, different ways. We have a, we have a, as I said, a bunch of committees. But we're, what we're also doing is we're really trying to build a culture that people want to stay and not just rely on how much they make a year, right? So these are things that we can control inside the fire department, um, giving everybody that sense of belonging. So we're really working hard to make our culture conducive to what people want in a modern workforce. Um, really high level engagement, like I said, they, we, we want them to be able to have an open door policy with fire administration. So we're really working hard to make sure that they feel like they want to stay here, not because of how much money somebody else makes or anything. And that's our job inside the fire department. Again, we're also sort of looking at other things, uh, station, fire station design, right? The last fire station design, we're very intentional with recruitment or retention of staff, specifically women. Um, we have talked about the importance of, of, of single rooms. We're now migrating to everybody gets their own bed so that we're not sharing beds every night. These are intentional sort of decisions that we're making to make sure that, um, we're hearing what our employees' needs are. It would go, it would, I would be remiss if I didn't discuss fire marshal's workload. I remind people that just because a building is built and inspections and planning department, they're done with the building for all intents and purposes. Well, that just puts another building in the fire department's inventory of things that we have to inspect based on code enforcement from a routine inspection perspective. So we get a building, we have to inspect it once every, every other year, every year. That keeps putting the workload onto the fire marshal's office. In addition to all of the plans that they have to review, uh, in, in addition to the re-inspections they have, these buildings are becoming more complicated. It takes them more, it makes, it takes them longer in each building to make sure that they're hitting all the marks they need to. So all of this is, is influences that are affecting the, the fire marshal's office. We obviously have a growing community and, again, with the built environment changing, we have to make sure that we're, we're staying up to speed with what that means. It's also, as I said, the complexity of the buildings. EV cars, EV chargers, solar panels, all of these things are things that we need to make sure that we're aware of and we're providing the support that we need to from our fire department, you know, for our staff members to make sure that they feel they can respond to the calls that they're going to see in the next twenty years. One of the biggest things in our fire department that is, uh, is an influence to us, and it's really kind of being placed on us by both our accreditation and our ISO for good reasons. But it's really kind of how do we prevent these injuries? Injury, uh, risk reduction, obviously the child safety seats. Uh, we need to make sure that we're coordinating, are coordinating those efforts with, uh, with our CAM partners. Any education opportunity that we have that we can provide to the community, we need to. And that's becoming more important and more evident inside the fire department. It's one of the five E's, you know, so there's five E's, community risk reduction. And, uh, and really that, that's sort of the education part is really important to us and it's becoming even more important. So you all helped with rewriting the department's strategic plan. We got all of our staff members together and we sat them down in, uh, Fire Station One's training room and we gave them a pen and we put some sticky notes on the, on the, uh, on the, on the wall. And they all helped us with the strategic plan. There was not a staff member that did not help us. They, they assisted us with the SWOT analysis, they assisted us with making our mission statement, our core values. Every part of the strategic plan, they had a, they, they had a say in. It was a miss, it was a member driven mission statement, it was a member driven core values. We developed our objectives throughout, you know, external stakeholder with you all and aligned that with what our, uh, our member in, uh, expectations are. So again, we're trying to get as much engagement as we possibly can. Everybody in the fire department had a pen in their hand and had the opportunity to put something on paper and help us out. We are currently rewriting the CAM and, uh, interlocal agreement. That is a very important document that governs how we operate together. Uh, it, it, there's, it had the, the initial five years and then we, we are now up for, uh, well, we're trying to do a multiple year, but right now it's the initial rewrite. That's a very big document that takes a lot of partnership and, uh, and coordination with the, uh, with the CAM partners. Obviously, we're reali, we're analyzing our deployment model to make sure we're fitting into the next twenty years of the fire department. We're doing things like, you know, we're, we're, we're making sure we're, we're meeting the town where they need us. We're into, we're, uh, we instituted a bike team. So we have a lot of these events in town that need us, like, you know, we just talked about today where there's two events coming up where there's. that need us, like, you know, we just talked about today where there's two events coming up, where there's going to be potentially twenty-five residents there. Well, that's something that we need to respond to, we potentially have to have staff. How does that look like? Do we need to just be static or do we need to be mobile? As these events get more complex and wider, we're trying to make sure that we're providing the services we need, so bike teams are mobile, they're able to respond quickly to find children or if there's somebody that got hurt on the way in, instead of a fire truck coming there or our uh ATV coming there, we're trying to look at ways that we can be mobile and 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 make sure that we're responding. We uh, we went ahead and we restarted our CPR training and certification, that's something that fall off, fell off during the pandemic. We have taught multiple individuals inside the town staff. We've worked with HSNC, we've taught lots of compressionally uh CPR over there, and we're really looking for partners outside that we can get in to help us teach the CPR or that we can teach the CPR too. We have a pending ISO inspection coming up in a couple months, that happens every five years. The state threw us for a little bit of a curveball because they moved it up by five months. We will be prepared, um, I feel like respectfully, the state had confidence in us to make sure that if they were going to give us, they were, they were going to take that five months away, I'm, I, I respectfully think that they knew that we could handle it, which we will. So that's an important initiative that's coming up in the next few months. Officer development program. I'm, I might, I might, this might be the first time you're hearing this, but I want to make sure that it's definitely on our current initiatives, but we're looking at the feasibility of putting bees at our fire station. This is, this is in coordination with Kimberly, so while you're hearing it first from me, she should get credit, and it should be put in Public Works's, you know, I, you know, their, their, their PowerPoint as well, but what we're looking to do is we're looking to partner with sustainability, and how can we make our fire department and our stations a little bit more sustainable? We had the idea of bees, so what we're going to do is we're potentially going to partner with an organization that's going to come in, and we're going to have a couple bee hives, and then what we would like to do is eventually train our staff to take care of those bee hives, anybody that wants to. We'll harvest the honey, we'll distribute that at the fire stations and around town. And then what Kimberly and I have talked about is potentially going to the new high school, the new middle school, working with their science teachers, getting them over. Kimberly can say how awesome municipalities are at sustainability. I can, the fire department can then talk about community risk reduction type of efforts and maybe potentially do a little bit of recruiting along the way. So it's just, we're looking at these unique ways that we can probably or potentially move that, the each initiatives, each uh, you know, the services that we want to provide forward. And then, I'm a little bit nervous saying this, but we need to continue with the kickball domination, there's no other way around it. I know he's in the room and I know he's staring at me right now, and I'm not going to look at him. But we have dominated in the kickball arena up into this point, and I don't really feel like, I mean, you please disagree with me with you, but we need to continue that domination. The seventeen-foot trophy is in Fire Station One, and we have no intention of removing it. So, again, accreditation, that is something that is always looking ahead, it's a circle. We can never let that, that die, we always have to make sure that the next documents that uh that we need to write are coming up. Finishing up our strategic plan, moving to our standard of cover, moving to our SAM assessment, uh our self-assessment manual. These are all big-time documents that we need to continue, it's a circle, it's not a linear, there's no end to that. Employee wellness, again, making sure that our employees, we're meeting our employees where they need to be. We have, we have talked about, and we had the ground floor of a health, a health and wellness committee, but really kind of getting that going. Continuing to strengthen our CAM partnership, we have done a really good job of providing the services. It next level is developing those policies, making sure that we all have uh accreditation models that are aligned. All of these things are, that are next level, the next phase of our, our relationship, we're moving to. A lot of things we already talked about, EV, uh uh solar panels, making sure our our staff are prepared for the emergencies we're going to see in the next fifteen or twenty years. That is going to change dramatically for them, and we need to make sure that we're looking around the corner for our organization and preparing them so that we're not flat-footed and worrying about when those emergencies get here, but we're prepared for when, when, so our staff are prepared for when they do. And then conclude, and then uh including the diversity, equity, inclusion, and the fire department really puts belonging there, because we can include people, but if we don't give them a sense of belonging, what's the point, right? So we're doing things like making sure our policies meet with, our policies are, are appropriate for all of our fire staff. We're making sure that our females have uh female-fitting clothes, if it's all possible. We all know unisex does not necessarily mean unisex, so we're trying to look everywhere we possibly can to give that sense of belonging where people want to stay here. Um, you know, again, circling back to opening doors and not lowering standards. Last night, we awarded our uh Fire Employee of the Year, and it was Natasha Bird. Danny got our valedictorian for our academy. These are highly talented individuals that happen to be females. We need to make sure that we're, 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 we have that mindset, and we're moving forward with that. So again, our, our, our instant, our, our call volume is increasing. It, we increased our call volume by about seven percent annually, um, that is going to continue. I think we might plateau just a little bit here, there with the move, with the uh, with the relocation of twenty-three, but it will then continue up that, that trajectory. We have a tremendous amount of uh training hours, those training hours are enormous despite the fact my comma's in the wrong place. I didn't even think Brandon told me that, so that's my fault. But, so we have, I mean, for three hundred hours of training per staff member throughout the year, I mean, they, they work a hundred and twenty hour, a hundred and twenty days, so that's a tremendous amount of training. A lot of that is just not stand, state mandated, it's above and beyond. Again, going back to our diversity initiative, twenty-three percent of our staff are now uh non-white males. Just a few years ago, we had, we had uh six people that were on the fire department with that non-white males. We're, we have now almost, we've doubled that now, so that's really important, and that's not in, you know, that's a success that we've created, but it's also an initiative that is going to be continuous, that's not something we're going to turn a blind eye to, to. Retaining our staff, in two thousand and twenty-one, we had almost uh twelve percent or twelve individuals from our fire department left. Twenty-one percent of our staff turned over in twenty twenty-one. Last year, that dropped tremendously, we had six percent of our staff. That's, that's, I say rents due every day, what I mean by that is, we have to continue that, that's not something that we can just stop, especially in a modern workforce. Plastic helmets we're giving away, I kind of feel like that, that number is sort of indicative to our workload from a prevention perspective. On these large events, we are given helmets out, that's, that's engagement with, with, with the public. Every single time somebody comes up, and we probably would have given more if we didn't continue to run out because we were just shocked at how many people were asking for them. But that, that's a pretty big number, and I think that's amazing about how many people are coming to these events and how many people want to interact with us. Three hundred and ten people were trained from a CPR perspective. That number might seem low in comparison to what probably think people think it should be, but it's just a ground floor uh a number where it's going to rise over the years. We're continuously looking for individuals that we want to teach CPR to. Again, trying to reduce that risk, making sure everybody's empowered to help out. Uh, I tell, you know, I, I say, I, being an active participant in your own self-rescue, helping those individuals around you, we want to facilitate that. Um, and then the miles driven, it's over a hundred thousand miles that our fire trucks uh drove last year. As a reminder, our stations are about two miles in, in radius. That's significant workload on our, on our department. We have to drive to Wake County Training Center or Sanford to do our facility training. It's a lot of driving, it's required by our ISO rating. That is, that just the trucks are continuously on the move. I really want everybody's attention to go to the courtesy uh picture. One of the things I think is super important is, you know, we take care of each other, and we're not all perfect. I think it's, it's, you know, if somebody calls and asks for help, it's not our job to judge them, it's our job to respond, regardless of what the situation is. Um, he asked me to take that out earlier and I refused, so again, I don't know if I'm going to get out of here. Um, one of the things you'll see on the left is the dedication, so with cricket, we found a lot of our staff members who probably never heard of cricket wanting to work the cricket events. And they actually became, a lot of them became really big stars as to the individuals that came here. And I thought it was super cool, in fact, people were trying to buy that T-shirt from our firefighter because he had a lot of signatures on it. Um, I to, I told him he was destroying town property, I'm not quite sure that, you know, I, I, I said that because I wanted it, um, he didn't give it to me though. But uh, yeah, so we're having a lot of dedication, our, our integrity of our staff is above and be, above, above anybody that I've ever met. Again, courtesy, and then innovation, we're always looking to be as innovative, innovate, innovative as possible through our, you know, that's staffing, we have, you know, trying to get things done that typically organizations that have tremendous uh staffing levels can accomplish, we're trying to move those, those needles. So, little bit of a did you know, we uh, we do have a professional basketball, we do have a previous professional basketball player that uh that played for us, he played at uh NC State in Georgetown, and he played a little bit overseas. We had five babies in the last year. I will say that from, if, in all reality, what that does is it also kind of, you know, I'm really happy that the town provides all these initiatives, including parental leave, that's amazing. That does mean that we have to kind of work around that, those staffing, because when that person's off, that fire, somebody's got to sit at their seat. So it's a, it's a really cool number, and we're, and I'm really happy that we can support them, it's really awesome. Uh, we have over six hundred and fifty years of service with the town. There's actually a lot of individuals, we call them the originals, Chief Kates is one of them, that had been here for a significant amount of time since nineteen ninety-nine. And a lot of them are actually going to retire, there's about eight of them that are coming close to retirement in the next few years. Circling back to the succession planning philosophy, we, we do not want there to be a void in our, in our services. We do not want there to be void in our leadership, so that six hundred and fifty years is super impressive, and a lot of those are going to be retiring in the next few years. Uh, twenty percent of our uh, our, our fire department uh used to work, uh, used to serve in the army, or I mean, in the armed forces, with the combined hundred years of service. We have an international firefighter. She joined us not too long ago in our academy. Our oldest employee is sixty-one and our youngest is nineteen. That goes to show that we have multiple generations working in the fire department. Again, that, that makes, that makes it our job even more important to make sure everybody is getting what they need inside the department. Every, every uh staff member has, uh, every uh staff member but uh at, at the rank of captain or above has an associate's degree, except for one, and he's almost done with his. Uh, that's why I brought them up, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're, they didn't know that the last part, the did you know, was about them. And then obviously, I think I've demonstrated this along the way, the fire department is significantly cooler than the police department. I'm not really sure there's any other way of looking at it. It didn't really need to be on here, but there's always, I mean, even though it shouldn't, even though it was obviously, you know, doesn't need to be written down, there it is, um, so. I want to circle back to what I said originally, which is the staff. These are the individuals that really, really do a good job all year long of providing the services, putting smiles on children's faces, working twenty-four-hour shifts away from their family. I oftentimes try and get um, like, sort of stories about our success in the field, right, like, what are you guys doing? The problem is, is they do it all day long, every day. They stop and help individuals with flat tires, they get gas, they, they will buy somebody a walker if they respond to a medical call and somebody needs uh breakfast, they will cook breakfast. These are tr, these are real stories that they just do every day, it's just part of who they are. So it's really hard to bring these stories up to you because there's, there would be three or four daily, and they really, really do a good job of, 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 of making, I, I would thank you, the residents, proud of your fire department, they work, they work extremely hard. We do have a softball team that's playing this weekend, Battle of the Badges. Um, we were, we weren't as successful last year as we were during the kickball, but we're hoping that we can be a little bit more successful, but again, they all left with smile, well, they were mad that they, they lost, but they left with uh, with uh, with smiles on their faces. So we're going to play our video. We finished our video earlier today, I hope you enjoy it. I think it's pretty cool, I want to thank communications for helping out, and I want to thank the individuals at the end for helping out.
Will it be as good as the police department?
I think as an elected official, I'm going to leave that up for you to decide. But yes.
Are y'all ready to hear a book? Yeah, me too, it's my favorite thing, reading books.
This is a good one. Today's book is A Day in the Life of MFD, presented by Mooresville Fire Rescue Department, loosely adapted from Fire Chief Fran by Linda Ashman. Good morning, the fire captain meets with the crew. It's a new shift, there's so much to do. Trucks are inspected above and below. Tools and equipment are ready to go. Then, lights begin flashing, clang, the bells blast. They leap into action, they need to move fast. They head on their way to help someone in need. A baby is choking and needs help to breathe. Back at the station, it takes the whole team to scrub and to wash the fire trucks clean. Lights begin flashing, clang, the bells blast. They leap into action, they need to move fast. Someone's unconscious, they hear out on the call. They make sure they're ready to handle it all. Back by the station, they go to pre-planned, so if a fire happens, they know as much as they can. Lights begin flashing, clang, the bells blast. They leap into action, they need to move fast. The smoke alarms alerting at a building in town. They go check it out, but no dangers around. Back at the station, they're practicing drills, training for rescues, improving their skills. Lights begin flashing, clang, the bells blast. They leap into action, they need to move fast. There's a car accident out on McCrimmon. They hurry to check on the men and the women. Back at the station, they prep for dinner. Burgers tonight, that's always a winner. Lights begin flashing, clang, the bells blast. They leap into action, they need to move fast. It's a neighborhood with houses on fire. Every second counts, it's down to the wire. Back at the station, they clean for the night. Dishes, tables, and floors are all shining bright. Lights begin flashing, clang, the bells blast. They leap into action, they need to move fast. Someone has called because they smell gas. They secure the area in case there's a blast. Back at the station, they get ready for bed. It's been a long day, they lay down their heads. Then lights begin flashing, clang, the bells blast. They leap into action, they need to move fast.
The end.
I had no idea firefighters could drive the ship.
Chief, I think it's steer the ship.
Uh, with that, do you have any questions?
Uh, Councilmember Fender, please, to get us started.
Yay, I get to go first. Um, that was a great presentation. I always look forward to um hearing from yourself and the police chief. They'll both have a great sense of humor. Couple of questions I had on your presentation. When you talked about the fuel cost, you said two thousand dollars in what year?
Uh, I, I'm, I'm rolling that from the, my memory, but I think in two thousand and twenty-one, when fuel costs went, like, it basically bottomed out.
Okay, all right, I just didn't get that.
On a side note, uh, one day, uh, one month this year, this fiscal year, uh, diesel fuel costs is rose by thirty-nine cents in one month.
Okay. Question about what you said when um Fire Station Number Three moved from Western Wake to its current location, you said. Fire Station Number Three moved from Western Wake to its current location. You said you're seeing less calls, but more unit movement? So what does that mean?
Okay, so this is going to get a little bit complicated, but when we're west of fifty-five, we're in the middle of basically carry. So we're a unit that's available for a lot of their calls. As we migrated to town, we moved out, we moved out of proximity to those calls and then kind of made ourselves available to our in-town. But what that also did is it also then simultaneously made our new ladder truck that's at that station available for in-town calls, where maybe a carry unit was being dispatched. Little bit of nuances about our dispatching, and I do think that call volume is more plateauing and it's going to continue then up as that development. It's just when you see a station realignment, you're going to see a little bit of fluctuation with calls because you're putting it in a new location. And since fire trucks are geographically dispatched, it just takes a little bit of time to see how that move is going to, is going to play out. Um, so that's kind of the nuances with that is in a new location, it might not be available to calls that it historically was, but now that, now that it's available in other areas, it's now available for that area. Because as I said, it's all geographic. The, 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 the fire trucks all have GPS and they're driven by, that's what drives their dispatching. I hope I explained that. It's a little bit convoluted and it's hard to get really into the weeds. Well, we could get into the weeds with dispatching, but.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Um, and then, uh, another question I had, uh, when you were talking about being prepared for the future and being prepared for different emergencies with E V chargers and solar panels. It made me think about the amount, the number of, um, buildings we have in Morseville that are no longer office space, but have transitioned to lab space. Do you have training surrounding how to handle a lab environment?
Yeah, so our, our fire department, Fire Marshal's Office do a good job of getting in the building early on and making sure the code is applied appropriately. And that's where, remember, a lot of the response comes from, which is, are we applying fire code? Because there's a lot of fire code that goes into these complex buildings. As they're in there, they will start communicating with the suppression staff that say, hey, there's this building coming online and these are the typical, when I say risks, I use that more of a broad term that we use in the fire department, risks that we potentially might have to take on with this building. And then that coordination between the Fire Marshal's Office, the suppression staff, and the building owner goes into, um, seeing what's in there. So I think I mentioned, uh, I did not mention earlier, but we pre-plan all of our buildings. So we go into every building and we take a look around. We make sure we understand where the shut-offs are, where the, where the, where the meeting points are. All that stuff is then documented and it's on the fire truck's computer. So then, so then that's all that data entry and it pops up when they, they get a call. But when we're coordinated in those conversations, being suppression, fire staff, uh, Fire Marshal's Office and the building owner, we come up with planning, uh, uh, ideas through the building owner because they have all the information. A lot of times they're obviously the subject matter expert, what's in there. So it's just further sort of diving into working with our partners to make sure that, you know, fires, twenty years ago, you never would care about, you know, non-government organizations. You just did their, what you want. But nowadays, things are so complicated. We rely heavily on NGOs or non-government organizations, which is building owners. So that training is often developed, uh, and it's customized per building, per occupant. I mean, there's overarching practices we have in the fire service that we're going to respond to new. But yeah, so it's a, it's a pretty heavy coordination every single, every single time a building comes on.
Yeah, and, um, that brought, it made me remember, I think I learned at one point, um, going back to how you've pre-planned your response, that that, the, one of the firefighters is looking at that plan as they're driving to the, the site?
Correct. Um, technology is, is dramatically, it's, 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 it's improving dramatically inside the fire service and availability of information on the way to a call. Not to get off topic, but the, carry now has the ability to send us potentially a link of a video of somebody who's on scene that's called nine-one-one. They use their phone for what's going on. We can see what's going on. Back to your point, that technology is there, that information is there. Part, we, we pre-plan all of our buildings, uh, annually. In fact, uh, Cap over there, he is one of the individuals, in fact, he runs our pre-plan program. So he does a very good job of making sure all of the staff is, 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 is understanding what the responsibilities with pre-plans. All that information goes in there and it can be, I mean, for a seven-story building, you have, every floor has a plan inside of our, our computer system. All of the pertinent information is in there and it's done for every commercial building.
Yeah, I found that amazing. I don't think the general public is aware of that. I certainly wasn't before being on council. And then lastly, but not least, why bees?
Why bees?
Why have you chosen that?
I love bees.
And I wholeheartedly, uh, support the endeavor. I'm just curious.
It wasn't a me, but so, one of the things we try and do is we just, we're looking for every way we possibly can to support the sustainability. The fire service is the least sustainable department out there, quite frankly. So if there's anything we can do that can help sustainability move their, their, their needle and what they're trying to accomplish on your behalf, we're going to do it. Um, I heard of a couple of fire departments doing it inside North Carolina and I thought it was a wonderful idea. I tried to build some, um, some momentum inside the fire department when I was talking about it. We have quarterly RNA, so I get in front of every single, uh, shift and all of them sit in front of me and we go over what their performance was and they're allowed to ask questions every single quarter. I told them, hey, I'm thinking of, we're thinking about getting bees. There was universal acceptance and I would say excitement associated with that. They all wanted to be, like, some of them that don't even really ever kind of speak up to like, we're getting bees, right? And I want to be a beekeeper. It was fascinating to me that they really wanted it. So again, it was just, our fire staff is amazing. And I think I read once that eighty-seven percent of all food is at some point pollinated by a bee.
Yes. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Skargen Johnson, followed by Councilmember Rouse.
I'll start with the bees.
Okay. I, I, hey, if there's any credit also to be had, please make sure that sustainability gets it as well. If it's a bad idea, it's my fault. If it's a good idea, it's everybody's idea.
So bees are a really good, um, idea. I noticed when I first moved here, there were bees. And then there was several years when I was trying to grow things, I did not see enough bees. And, um, to grow food, I would do hand pollination. But over the last two years, I've been noticing more bees around and I know that people are thinking very, um, carefully about the, um, kind of pesticides they're using on their lawn and the kind of, um, fertilizers that they're using and, and adding bees to the fire stations will help, um, awareness, but it's also going to help the gardens among all the neighborhoods and help people grow their own food. I think that is not something you can directly point to, but you know it's going to happen. And it's just a natural, um, balance that will be introduced. So I am in full support of the bees. The question I have for you is about the CAM system. I think the CAM system was a really clever, um, concept several years ago and there was a little bit of clunkiness with some of the calls in the beginning. And I just wanted to hear, is there a couple of things that you're thinking about refining and what those might be? Is there probably just administration or is there anything that the public would be appreciative of that you think?
I think, I think it, I think the public, in my mind, should, should celebrate how progressive this system is. I think fire departments typically, they like their sandboxes and they don't really want a whole lot of people coming into it. Um, I think I can point to a couple of fire departments, like, you know, in central North Carolina that have that. So for us to drop jurisdictional boundaries for service delivery and the end, making sure fire trucks are delivered to this, to the residents as quickly as possible, regardless of the side of the, the name on the side of the fire truck, is a pretty monumental achievement. I would say that a lot of people like those successes early on and then the hard work comes in when you're having very tough conversations about how you're functionally going to make that happen long-term. And I think what you're seeing now is the success of the, of the CAM model is now going to second generation, um, staff members from each department. So obviously there was a lot of excitement from the initial people who got it going, but now that some of the people are turning over inside of the departments that were originally on board, what I find fat, what I, what I, what I think is, is awesome is that that sort of level of excitement is there, is still there. And those second generation people are now picking up the ball and running with it like we did. So it shows a level of sustainability with, with, with that relationship, which I think is extremely important. So I would say that, I would say that, uh, if I was to tell a resident that it's, it's here to stay. It, it's amazing that we can deliver the services that we can with, with our, with our regional partners and, um, that should always be celebrated.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Rouse, please.
Thank you, Chief. A great presentation. Um, I would also recommend pickleball as a possible bonding competition.
Okay.
Amazing.
It is? I hear you're pretty good at it.
I'm not either, but, uh, I was in Cary at the pro tournament and it's just crazy. I mean, we were playing, but that's a conversation for another time.
We can paint the lines inside the fire station, so we can move the trucks out.
We can get creative. We can get creative. Uh, on a more serious note, um, I, I did have one question about, um, we, we're, we're getting a lot of success in our town with our technology areas, you know, facility vision from smart, you know, the smart cities, building systems, automation, looking at data. To what extent, and, and also sustainability, looking at, um, you know, electric fleets and things like that. So how do you envision as the fire department, which is doing a great job, that was an excellent presentation, what would be the vision of, and, and I'm sure this is already going on, of, of, uh, cross, you know, partnering with our technology department? So that, you know, when they're doing things like generated A I or data analytics or building automation, for example, in terms of better predicting which areas of town may be more amenable to fires. Is there data out there we can get, dashboards, for example, that say where more fires are occurring and that, put that up as a dashboard, like what we do at Church Street, when you go in there, you can look at what facilities. So just, just real high level, just trying to figure out how we can.
Yeah, I, I, if you look at our accreditation model and I A S O, data and, and, and the output and the outcome measurements that, that we get from our data is extremely important. Data is really hard in the fire service because there's a lot of quantitative and qualitative measurements that go into data analysis in fire because there's a lot of outliers that we throw out. It would be wonderful and I think long-term, I would be great if we had Power BI's that were forward-facing so individuals can see real-time data. Um, they can see, they can go to and be as transparent as we possibly can through, while, you know, protecting HIPAA and everything that we need to, where those incidences are happening. And really kind of provide that in very clear, concise, easily, uh, uh, consumable information to the public. Power BI, live maps that show, uh, exactly where those calls are, you know, storyboards on G I, on R G I S, those are great kind of technologies. We have been begging technology companies to move our, 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 our industry forward with data analysis so it can become more streamlined. As I said, it's difficult to do with all the nuances that go into data analysis. Um, we've worked with Rick and his staff on multiple occasions to try and get that going. But it's really kind of in my mind, having forward-facing documents so people can see real-time how our, how our performance is. And then show, to your point, heat maps and where those calls are. That would be pretty cool in the end. And I, I think that the, the department will get there one day. It's obviously labor-intensive to try and make that happen. And the fire staff, you know, we hire fire staff to do ride on a fire truck and then at some point we're like, oh, can you do data analysis? And then they all scatter, right? So the skill set is a little bit different, but just trying to work through those right now.
Thank you.
Our pretend Garamella, please.
Thanks, Chief. I think, um, I'll be biased and the chief knows here, like, I'm more to fire. I think he's not even here now.
No, I think we scared him away, but that's okay.
That's okay. We, we have two ex-chiefs here, so they can.
They can pick up, yeah. They got his back, I'm sure.
Yeah. That's a absolutely excellent video. Um, the one thing I wanted to catch on that you said was not true is fire department is sustainable. Your fire, all the new fire stations have solar on it. No other buildings do.
Well, I said the least sustainable. We are sustainable, but we are unfortunately had big trucks and big buildings.
I totally agree. If, if, if there are like solar or E V trucks in the next twenty, thirty years, you know, we can take that, but that's not coming.
They are, they are out there and I'm like, we can talk price if you'd like.
Yeah. Why don't you talk to?
He's already looking at me.
Forge Nano, you know, for the batteries. Okay. So, um, the other question I had is more about the call volumes. Will we be able to get call volumes based on age demographics? Or like, you know, are they calls going to the apartments, homes, or senior living? You know, where are like medical calls? So kind of trying to understand, you know, as the town starts developing, you know, like whatever is left, especially the corridor of Marshall, uh, McCrimmon and, and other areas and the apartment complexes are coming, are the calls, where are the calls really going to? So that would be good.
Yeah, we, um, we can gather that and coalesce that data now. It's just so labor-intensive for us to do at fire administration when we're trying to tackle all of the other initiatives we have going on. It's just, we, just that labor kind of, who's going to do that? We kind of piece that together right now in fire administration. A lot of other organizations have individuals that are just that's dedicated, their job is to do all the time, which to your point, we would love to have because if we can direct our services, including the prevention, which is really why that data would come into handy, not only just the response, but how can we get out there and communicate to the, to the public about, hey, we're seeing an uptick in fires or medical calls inside your apartment complex. How do we mitigate that? How do we stop that? How do we help them? So both from an emergency response and, and an education, that would be wonderful. We have that data for the most part. It's just sort of.
Yeah, because I remember last time when you and Scott came and gave presentations, the number of calls on the senior living is pretty high. You know, that was one indicator you said, like, you know, you continuously get calls understandably, you know, for those kind of areas. But would like to know, you know, um, what it is, like, you know, where it's going, not, but at least a rough data to understand where our calls are mostly going. Is it going to the kids, you know, like, or, you know, battery replacement or, you know, so something like that.
Yeah, I, I, so I think, um, Deputy Town Manager Giselle and I were talking earlier about how returning to our gap analysis that we provided. We did take a year off just because we needed the fire department to get settled with everybody in their new positions. But moving forward, we're going to start producing a gap analysis and we can add that data in there, which is, these are sort of the places we see calls at a higher level, uh, ages or stuff that just is not going to go into the HIPAA rule, but we can provide that transparency, sure.
Yeah, but the only reason I'm asking is education comes as a second piece of it. You know, you're continuously getting the same kind of calls happening again, so education would be.
The two things in the fire service that are, that are, that are growing in importance is data management and how do you use that to educate through a community risk reduction? And of course, that just takes people as well, so.
Good presentation.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So Chief, I really don't have a question, but, um, a great presentation. Thank you for being here again. We saw you not too long ago too. So we appreciate all the updates and the information. So again, not really a question, but I, I think it's important to remember, and I know you know this, that, um, this is a pretty new department. Um, this department has only been a professional, full-time department for like twenty-five years. And, uh, prior to that, not that they weren't professional, but prior to that, it was a volunteer fire department here in Morseville who did a fabulous job too. But as the town has grown, um, obviously the department had to mature. And so, um, that decision to go from a, a volunteer department to a professional, full-time department was made prior to me getting on council. But it was a wise decision to make at the time and it, it, it just, we need to pause every once in a while and remember how far we've come. And, um, you know, in twenty-five years, um, you and your predecessors and everybody in the department has really come far in, um, this, this world of firefighting and the, the, the data that you, and you talked about using data to improve yourself and to, um, improve the service to our community. You all have done a phenomenal job of that and I know you will continue to do that as, as things change and as, even in, in the way we built the fire department, uh, the, the information that you all have learned over, over years went into how that Fire Station Three was designed to be safer for our firefighters. And so I, I just applaud you all on, um, the really tremendous improvement, um, to this really new organization. to this really new organization in a short 25 years and all that you've been able to accomplish. So I thank you all very much. I always say, you know, we're very grateful to have the public servants we do here in the town that make it a safe place to be. And to know that you all are there to respond when we need you is of great comfort. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you. And I would say that I need to thank you all because since we are a young fire department, it's difficult to move those mountains that we have in a short amount of time, but it takes council support financially, you know, out there advocating on our behalf. So I'm going to circle back to you and thank you all because you understand the needs that we have and you've put sort of that to work on our behalf. And I really want to thank you as well. The town managers need thanked. And then again, the residents for their support, but also the individuals, the women and men that actually ride the fire trucks, they're the ones that are away from their families. They're the ones that see the things they do, but they're extremely professional, they're extremely competent. And I'm not just saying this, I would really put any one of our members up against any fire department in the nation. They are outstanding individuals. And it's evident by both the outcomes we have and the respect we have in the fire service in North Carolina and a little bit to a certain extent across the United States. So I would thank you as well.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you guys are really well respected. The ISO one, huge accomplishment for a department of our size. And I'm just really proud of our public safety in general, being really outward facing and interacting with residents in so many different ways. That was a really great video.
Yeah, and we'll be sharing that video daily on our Facebook page in case anybody wants to watch it. I'm sure Pete will, so.
I'm sure, no doubt, because he's in it. I mean, he's got Cameo, which is.
That's right. And I just, as a note, Jeffrey was in it as well since he's next. So the patent has been passed to him, so we'll all be anxious to see.
Show it in their Marshall MPD media, Facebook.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can hack that, that would be pretty great.
We'll figure that out.
Okay, I just had a couple of things. You mentioned the fire marshal workload early on and how that's growing. I know, does that not pay for itself in the inspection cost and the fees? I mean, I know we always try to recapture as much as possible.
Correct. We try and recapture as much as we possibly can, but in the end, they're not, we're not going to become revenue neutral with our fire, with our suppression or with our fire marshal's office. It's just their workload is becoming so high that it's just not going to be able to pay for itself. I mean, we get, one thing we did last year is we revamped our fee schedule. So we took a look at how can we generate some more revenue without putting a big onus on our property owners, our residents? You know, we tried to find some middle ground and I think, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but one thing that maybe the next year's budget will reflect is the fire department did a lot, did a good job of increasing our revenue by almost 100%. Clearly, it's not going to pay for itself, but we're looking for ways that we can support the budget development and kind of pay for ourselves. It's never going to be a dollar for dollar, it's just, in my opinion, it wouldn't be because the cost would just be too high.
Okay, sounds good. And once again, could you just explain a little bit more about the bike team? I didn't quite get that. I know that the police department has a bike team because they troll that way.
So it's similar to a bike team, so they're bike team, but for us, it's really kind of a medical response. So it allows them to be nimble in large events so that they can kind of respond without having to drive a truck or an ATV through it. They can quickly get there in triage and kind of do some, get an idea of what's going on before they call other resources in there. So they're going to have a medical bag, they're going to have like some saddle bags that has some additional equipment on it so they can get to people who need help in July 3rd or Spring Fest or whatever one of our events are.
Okay, and you guys are real close to the Greenway right here.
Correct.
Station one, so you can really make that happen too, which is wonderful. Do you have any defibrillation training?
So that's part of the CPR. So if there's a certain level of CPR training that goes along with the AED. We've worked with Chuck Queen in our risk management division so that we can have, know where the AEDs are. We can coordinate with any of the AEDs that are onsite with our staff so they know what they need. But yeah, we, a part of our CPR training is AED usage.
Okay, because that's something that might be a code corner type of thing. More understanding in our entire environment. And talk about the data crunching. I really like how Councilmember Row generally brings that up. I think of our IT department as supporting all the departments. So I don't think you need the expertise within the fire service. I mean, IT, you have to ask to get, but I mean, they should be able to align their expertise just like Kimberly is helping you with sustainability in general. You're not experts in sustainability, we have people who are. So that's just what came to mind. And the more ideas Hackathon, that might be an opportunity to have everybody help us understand our data better and have a dashboard that's customer facing.
Right.
So that's just a couple of thoughts there.
Okay.
Really like the interaction you have with Pete. I think that's very nice and I want to keep that going. So anything you can do to keep dominating that department, I think, well, he'll return in kind.
In kind, I'm sure. But I think it's also worth noting that that actually authentically goes through the whole department. And I think what you see is on calls, that relationship is there as well. And it really, in the end, makes residents feel safer and have better outcomes. And it's all pretty authentic through our whole department.
Yeah, I think it's wonderful. I think we've all said thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you very much.
At this time, it's 8:06, we're scheduled for a 10-minute break. You want 15 or 10? Looking for. Okay, let's come back at 8:20, 13 minutes, right in the middle. Thank you. Okay, we're going to come back into order. We're at item nine, new items. We will hear from Town Manager Brandon Zudema at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for a few minutes tonight. As you know, we've had some off and on conversations for, it seems probably months, talking about proclamations and how we manage those requests for proclamations, how we roll that into managing overall council meeting time. So after talking with you all in smaller groups and individually in some cases, I talked with Michelle Parker Evans, our interim town clerk. She cannot be here tonight due to a death in her family, but she has contributed to this significantly as well. So what we want to do tonight is show you some proposed amendments to Rule 25. Of course, Rule 25 of the Town Council Policies and Rules of Procedure is what governs the issuance of proclamations and also addresses some very specific resolutions that Town Council might offer. And again, based on the need for efficiency and the number of proclamation requests we're seeing, we've reviewed the current policy and made some recommendations for you to consider tonight. Again, the intended outcome of this is clarification on procedures, making sure that we're consistently handling all proclamations and resolutions and that we're supporting meeting efficiency. So with that, highlighting some of the proposed changes. And again, you have a redlined version of Rule 25 that's attached to this item. If you'd like to follow along with that, I'm not going to read through that for you. I'm going to hit the highlights instead. I think that will probably be more efficient and effective for you. So again, the proposed changes on a high level, adhering to deadlines for proclamation requests. So one deadline for external, because we sometimes have to do some follow up with that, and then a shorter deadline for internal requests to make sure we're getting those into peak in time. Limiting the reading of proclamations during council meetings. We're going to evaluate that both based on content and then if someone is here to receive it. Also capping the number of proclamations that can be read in one meeting. I'll talk a little bit more about that. Clarifying guidelines for both staff and the community. And clarifying resolution guidelines for staff and the community, although we do not deal with a lot of those in the context of what this rule is. Again, as I mentioned, we're going to require that external requests come at least 30 days in advance. That's in the existing policy, we just haven't always enforced it. We're going to do that to the best of our ability because it really puts our staff in a crunch when they get something from outside and then have to try to contact the people and follow up and clarify. So really just trying to be fair to make sure that we get it right in a timely manner. And then 12 days in advance because that's our agenda deadline timeline for all other items. Also clarifying a little bit, will not be considered for proclamations, political issues, personal issues, religion, controversial matters and commercial purposes. We do not feel are the intent of the proclamation policy that you have. A little bit more about limiting some of the proclamations. So the recognition that occurs in meetings should be to individuals or groups that live or work in Morrisville or had a prior significant impact on Morrisville or events that occur in Morrisville or directly impact our residents or businesses. And then holidays or other issues that directly impact Morrisville and our residents or businesses. Again, limiting the reading of proclamations to those that are requested by staff or council and those with a recipient present to receive the proclamation. Again, doesn't mean we won't acknowledge the proclamation, but we will not actually read the full document is our recommendation in meetings where it's not coming from staff or council and doesn't have a recipient. And again, limiting that to three per meeting. And I'll talk about how we clarify that in a second. Also offering some clarification, you each have the ability, the authority to issue proclamations outside of the meeting. They don't necessarily get read or even acknowledged in a meeting, but can be issued by you to another organization. Also some clarification in that document around the use of a letter in support if for any reason a proclamation is not justified. Clarifying the purpose and use of the resolutions there. And then really just a general cleanup of that policy to make it flow a little better, a little easier to read and really to use, both for our staff and for folks in the community that might be requesting one. So that's quick highlights, just wanted to get through those for you before we talk about next steps. Happy to answer any questions you have or if you feel there's anything we have not addressed that you would like to hear about.
Mayor Preton, Garamella, please.
Thanks, Brandon. One of the things I didn't see is, you know, Cary has a certain standards that they do and they don't get into. So I wanted to see what they were because I thought that was pretty interesting, not getting into political kind of a stuff. And also like international issues too. I want to ensure like whatever it is, the guidelines is what is more important to our town than getting into something we don't have any control on.
So I think we could align those probably in the categories you see here in different instances. I think some of that is going to be controversial matters that I think it makes it practical for you to say, we're not going to engage in that. Sometimes I think that's also going to be political issues. So keeping in mind that, you know, what we're showing you with the red line is a policy. It's not necessarily all the procedures, so we can certainly add meat to that as we go through and have different experiences. But the policy is really intended to be those general guidelines of what we will and won't do. But we could certainly look at Cary if that's what you'd like us to do.
Yeah, because I remember we did something and then it was, I can't remember which proclamation it was. And when I talked to my fellow council members there, they said, no, we don't get into those. So that was interesting when I heard that.
And I think using this as more of a filter going forward, we've been pretty open to reading most proclamation requests that we got. So we're going to do a better job hopefully to help you with some initial filtering by staff. And then in cases where we don't feel that it's clear in terms of the policy, we can certainly contact you offline and get your feelings on, you know, whether a proclamation request is appropriate or not.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, thank you, Brandon. And as you know, I support us doing this, not because I don't like reading proclamations or hearing from them, I just feel like when we're doing more than three, when we're doing six proclamations, it waters down all of them and makes them more trivial and less significant. And so I, I'm grateful that we are doing this. I am curious if, have you like looked at our past proclamations? And with these changes, how, like many proclamations would have been eliminated? Or how significant would the impact be?
I have not, in part because our interim clerk, Michelle, is working on putting together a list of all the proclamations that we can track by going back meeting to meeting. Unfortunately, we didn't have good tracking on that previously, so we're sort of creating that now. And then we'll use that going forward. And when I talk about next steps, one of the things we're going to do is offer you like an annual report of here's the proclamations that were read, perhaps here's what we didn't read, here's what was read live, that give you a summary of over the course of a year, what it looks like. And then that's another good opportunity, you know, 12 months from perhaps the end of this month when you consider approving this. We come back and share that with you and you tell us if you think we need to adjust anything.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
If anyone else, Councilmember Row.
It's dropping. We, in the past, I think it was Mayor Preton, Garamella who brought it up. We have citizen proclamations that we've been able to issue on a case by case basis. I delivered one last DiVale to Gurry Burmey, which was great. Would it be, would it be the staff's preference to do those citizen proclamations outside the council meeting?
I think generally speaking, yes.
All right, okay, because I have one more that I'm considering. But I would always call the council members first to ask them, relate to the staff. And, you know, they may say, well, we don't think this is worthy of it. I know it's really up to us as council members to bring it, but don't you think there should be some kind of standard, right, that we set for this? You know, I just want to, is it there already? Okay, I'll have to review that policy. I just wanted to.
Yeah, I think we would anticipate or ask that anything that you would do would fall within the guidelines of what would be an acceptable proclamation. But again, we're always happy to put that in the right format for you. So the town clerk, the deputy clerk can help you with if that comes in. They may have some questions or maybe it'll help you with suggestions on how to make it what we think fits policy.
And the reason I asked that is because we're trying to make them more meaningful and have less. If, you know, someone said, well, I'm going to do a citizen proclamation and I want to do it here, then that's going to add to the proclamation and take time away from the meeting. So it might be better to do it like at a, you know, event that they're hosting or go to the community or something and present it. So that's why I asked.
Yeah, I think that's the most useful. There's always an opportunity in advance of a meeting. We've done some different, you know, approaches of that occasionally with groups that don't necessarily need or want to be in the meeting, but they can get a picture and some of that kind of stuff as well. But yeah, I think doing it one of their events is probably more meaningful to them.
Hold on, Councilmember Row.
Yeah, all done, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So thank you for bringing this forward, Brandon. I agree with the changes you're proposing. I think there are, there are some towns that don't read any proclamations. They have a policy and I know that because I would do the pancreatic cancer day proclamation and we've had people asking across the state. And some towns won't read them at all. But something, something that Councilmember Row just said, and I don't think, I don't think you have that in here as a proposed change, but, you know, does it make sense? And you don't have to answer this right now, mull it over, but does it make sense if a proclamation is being read at an event, then that would preclude it being read? That would be another criteria, then it shouldn't be read at town hall. So do you have that in there or is that?
I don't know that we have that specifically in there. I think it more speaks to the idea that if it's a, if it's an individual recognition or something that, you know, we wouldn't read in a meeting, if it's desired to have it presented outside, it could be. But I can certainly look at that and think about some language that would tweak that.
Thank you, Frank. I didn't think of that at all until the conversation just now and I can't recall if anything was in there. So that might be something to kind of add because I agree with Councilmember Fender. When, you know, we're reading six or eight, you know, it does dilute the significance of what we're trying to highlight. And so.
If I could, let me ask for a little perhaps consensus around that because I think the only time that that might come up is that we have, you know, done some cultural recognition here. recognition here, and then those proclamations have occasionally also been read at the event, or a celebration of that cultural item that I think you all, or have, or staff has felt was appropriate to read here, for the public to see and hear, but then also is perhaps appropriate at, you know, that cultural event, so we may just try to work our way through that, if you would be okay with that.
So, that's a good, so you're making a distinction between our own events, as, I'm thinking more of other organizations at their events, so, yeah, there might be a distinction there.
And I think there is, for example, you know, this year, we got a request, well, probably two or three requests for holy proclamations, and so, you know, we did a, we did a town recognition, but then there were individual organizations hosting events, and we provided them proclamations, but didn't do it through a meeting.
There you go, that kind of covers that, but I'm not sure that's spelled out, but anyhow.
We'll take a look at it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I don't see anyone else, so if you want to provide us next steps?
Yes, sir. So again, we'll be back April 22nd, I'll bring some clarification around the two items, I think, that were raised, and ask you to consider approval on the 22nd. Assuming that you approve that, we'll then update the guidance for that submission process on the town's website. We'll also provide sort of a set of how-to guidelines for anyone that might be interested, it'll be available on the website as well. And as I mentioned, the town clerk is now tracking proclamations, and as we can have time to do a little more research, and go back through all these meeting agendas to see what's there, we'll be able to do an annual report to you, I anticipate we might do that, you know, in early '25, to get a, here's what happened in '24, and let's talk about, do you want to revisit this at all?
Sounds good, Councilmember Johnson?
I just remembered one more thing I wanted to add, Brandon, the enforcement of our policy is important.
Agreed.
If we are going to publish a policy, and folks are going to read it, and, you know, 90% of them are going to go, "Oh, I missed the deadline," then we can't, we need to treat everybody fairly. So I think it's important that we enforce what we're publishing to the public.
Absolutely agree, and respectfully, I think that goes for external applicants, and that goes for staff, and respectfully for council as well, that, you know, three days before a meeting is a little tough to, to sometimes get together, you know, and maybe after the pack, so that's the 12-day, I think, is a fair, everybody knows that going in, you know, we need that to be able to get into the packet, but I 100% agree on being consistent.
I thank you for that, I want to make sure I emphasize that, so I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just wanted to share one thought about the idea of, like, a holy proclamation, and then other people want it read at their events, I'd like it to be, like, a May, like, I wouldn't want to prohibit that, because a lot of organizations would like to emphasize what we've already done, so that's just a thought.
Yeah, and I think we'll look at the verbiage and see what we can do about that.
Okay, so we're scheduled to vote on this in two weeks, there may or may not be any changes, but it sounds like we're all pretty comfortable with what we've seen so far, so thank you very much for bringing this over.
Okay, thank you.
And now our deputy town clerk, Bianca, will present any public comments received.
We have one person who's signed up for the public comment, her name is Savitha Tigaharaja.
Okay, if you'd please approach the microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak on any subject of your wish, if you could just, once again, provide your name and your residential address, and as soon as it beeps down to zero, if you're still speaking, if you just finished that one thought, we'd appreciate it. Welcome.
Good evening. I don't think the mic is on.
Deputy Speaker, can you help her out?
Good evening, my name is Savitha, I live in 2020 Kirk Haven Road, Morrisville, meeting the mayor, council members, and everybody else present here. I'm here on behalf of the basketball community, to thank the town for hearing our requests and building more basketball courts in the area, we had a recently inaugurated one in the shallow court. As spring is here, the weather is getting better, we've had more and more people go there and play, I myself have gone out there with my son and my husband, and we've started, like, you know, getting some hoops, so it's been, it's been time well spent, and I want to thank the town for making this possible. The lighting is awesome, we, we were able to play there under the lights, and we felt a lot safer, and, you know, it was brighter, and we wanted to keep playing, so that has helped a lot, the fencing is awesome, it has shielded us well from the cricket balls that come our way, so that's a, that's a good investment.
So, while I bring all of this, I also want to bring some concerns that have been, you know, given to us as feedback by the actual community who's been playing basketball, and I want to go ahead and read the feedback that we received, motivated first, and then also give a few other things. So here's feedback one, we played one day after it was completed, and these two people slipped and fell because of uneven surfacing, and most of us felt our knees, like, while running there, because the, there was no heat炕 supporting on the top of, like, other courts. The warning now is that the church street park courts are by the same practice, and they will be given a similar finish, that's feedback one, and another feedback is, the feedback about the playing surface is that it was not very good. Our lunchtime group used to play there for the past 20 years, they abandoned the court after the new surfacing, they said it's concrete and very uneven. We currently use either parking department or Kerry YMC department, both have soft surfaces, these are the just the feedbacks that we received. So after we received this feedback, my husband and I, we also spoke to some, you know, just, like, random people who were playing basketball there, and to get some input from them, including my son, who's a high school varsity player with his coach, and they, we did confirm that the surface is uneven, and in some spots it's rough, and other spots are mostly free, so, like, when you run, you tend to fall down, or, like, your knees buckle, so... Okay, I'll just finish this. So, what we wanted to say is, like, you know, with two more courts coming up, we just want the town to go review, maybe, and then confirm what's happening, and also maybe look at other courts, so that the same thing doesn't happen in the two new courts that are coming up, because we don't want people falling down and not using the courts because we're very purpose bringing these courts out just to play. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, and staff has heard your concerns. You indicated that was the only one signed up?
Yes, that's correct.
Was there anyone else in the room who wanted to speak to this body on any subject of your choosing, or up to three minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. We have one public hearing on this evening's agenda, a proposed master sign plan for the Southport campus, and a resolution amending personnel policies. We will hear from May Golden, Planner One, of the Planning Department at this time.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Crowley, May Golden, Planner One for the town of Morrisville, and I'll be presenting item 2024-740, a proposed master sign plan for the Southport Innovation So here is an aerial of the Southport campus, and it consists of approximately 95.8 acres, and is identified by the Wake County parcels shown here. And the applicant is ground-level architects, and there is a representative here today. The applicant has provided a map of the proposed signs, as well as a legend for type and quantity. The applicant is proposing two of the Type A ground signs, and these are comparable to the Type A monument signs in Section 516 of the UDO. The town typically permits 32 square feet per sign face, for a monument sign, and the applicant is requesting 38 square feet, an additional eight square feet sign face, respectively, with max heights of six and a half feet and four and a half feet. Additionally, these calculations are coming from provided elevations that will be shown on Slide 5 and 6, with maximum heights of six and a half feet and four and a half feet. In addition, as a reminder, the master sign plan allows the applicant to propose their own dimensional standards, and when a sign permit is applied for, the permit would be reviewed against the standards approved in this master sign plan. And this will not affect the UDO or set any new precedent. So ground level has provided the lettering dimensions, which are repeated for monument signs A, B, and with varying heights, and the Southport logo here repeated on sign types A, B, and C. So ground level is proposing two Type B ground signs, this sign type could be compared to, again, sign type A in the UDO, and the applicant is proposing a sign face of 38 square feet with a maximum height of four feet. The applicant is proposing one of the Type C signs, again, these align somewhat with a mix of towns' signs types A and B, they are proposing a maximum height of six and a half feet, a sign face of 38 square feet, square feet, and a total length of 60 feet. The applicant is also proposing three new amenity-type ground signs, and these would best align with towns' Type B ground signs. The signs shown here would be a maximum of 36 square feet of sign face area, with a height of three and a half feet tall. Part of these amenity signs, ground level is also proposing two amenity bench signs, with the lettering face not to exceed 16 square feet and eight square feet. Ground level is also proposing some building identification and pedestrian wayfinding signs, specifically, they're requesting four, yep, four trail marker signs, each of which would have approximately two square feet in sign face area. In addition to these, the applicant is requesting 23 trail marker signs, each of which would have approximately four square, four square feet of sign face area. The applicant has also included some notes with the plan as well, future signage for each type will be erected at the included locations, the amendment to the sign plan will be handled with town staff through the minor modification process, dimensions of each sign type will not exceed what has been proposed in this application, the ground signs will not interfere with site triangles and intersections, this has been verified by the town engineer, and signs shall be internally lit by low voltage landscaping lighting. In addition, the application has been submitted in conjunction with amenity upgrades to the Southport Innovation Campus. So staff recommends approval of the master sign plan application for the following reasons, the application complies with the stated purpose of regulations in the UDO, Section 516.1A, the request does not include any prohibited signs as identified in UDO Sections 5.16.2D, 5.16.2E, and 5.16.2F. The application does not include any temporary signage, the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the application does not conflict with any other provisions of the UDO or the Morrisville Code of Ordinances. At the March 14th, 2024 meeting, PZB recommended approval of the Southport Master Sign Plan by a vote of 4 to 1. And here today, council is asked to open a public hearing this evening, and action on this item is slated for the following council meeting on April 22nd, and that's all I have for you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Do we have anyone signed up for that?
We have three individuals who have signed up for the public hearing at this time, one by the name of Humanaan Muir Gosson, another Savitha Tigaharaja, as well as Martha Howard.
Okay, are we going to be able to get the clock working?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. If the first person would like to come up and address this group? Want to call out that first name again? Okay, so that's one of the three. Sorry? Two of the three? Okay.
Yes, Humanaan, my apologies, Martha Howard.
Okay, is Martha Howard still here with us? Okay, that's fine, so why don't we just leave it open for now, in case she comes back? Oh, Marty Howard signed in? Maybe she thought she was just signing in to attend the meeting.
Understood.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
That is interesting, so while we discuss, we can just leave it open, and we'll decide to perhaps close it, or leave it open, depending on our discussions. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender at this time.
Just a couple of questions on the placement of these signs. Is there anything that shows where the two Type A signs are going to be, and the two Type B?
Are you able to see this, okay?
Yeah, but where are the, where would the signs be?
So, the monument Type A signs are going to be at the aviation intersection here, and then Monument C will be here, at the Evans Aviation Intersection, and then Monument Site Type B will be here.
All right, that's all I have right now.
Does anyone else have any questions? I'm sorry? No, I can just open it, we have to vote to close it. If no one has any questions, and there's no one here to speak on this item, would this council like to close the public hearing? I had to entertain that motion.
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Mayor Portem Garamella, all those in favor of closing this public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 6-0. Does anyone have any questions for staff, before we let her go? We plan to vote on this in two weeks. Okay, excellent, thank you very much for preparing this, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And just as a point of order, the 22nd is actually a Monday, because our next meeting is on a Monday, not, not Tuesday, because of city vision.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I was just making sure that was the case. So my red lines, it's...
I'll have to remind you.
Okay, now we're at item 12, action items. There is one action item on this evening's agenda, resolution amending personnel policies, which was briefed at the March 26th meeting, we will hear from Nate Meyer, interim human resources director, at this time. Mr. Meyer, mayor, sorry.
You got it, it's like, we'll copy each other, mayor, mayor, right?
Yep, that works.
All right, I wanted to start with, if there was any questions from the, from council on any of the items we discussed before, I think we had addressed questions previously, and see if you have any thoughts before we moved in.
Okay, I think we're all good.
All right, well, if I may, recommend adoption of the personnel policies, I'd like to do that at this point.
I would entertain that motion at this time. I recognize Mayor Portem Garamella. I recognize mayor Portem Garamella. To approve this policy, I don't have the.
It's resolution 1024-107.
Yeah, I put a motion to approve, motion 2024-107, zero, resolution amending the personnel policies.
Second.
I have a motion from mayor Portem Garamella, a second from councilmember Skrogan Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 6-0. Thank you for your patience waiting until you got to this point and then doing a great job, very efficient.
Thank you. That's what I'm here for.
Okay. At this time, we're at item 13, future meetings, events and community engagement opportunities. To promote meeting efficiency moving forward, we'll be removing this agenda item from future meetings as our other communication channels are doing a great job bringing awareness to our future meetings, events and engagement opportunities. As always, for a full listing of events, please see the town calendar at www.morrisvillenc.gov. At this time, we're at council and manager comments. At this time, I'd like to recognize councilmember Skrogan Johnson, followed by mayor Portem Garamella.
Thank you, mayor. Last time we met, I mentioned that there was a basketball tournament going on in town and out of town and across the country. And I think that our area really shined over the, the tournament. Both men and women's teams were phenomenal and even UNC. But I'm really happy that NC State was like a Cinderella team and they did really well, both men and women's. They both made it to the semifinals and they did, had a great season. So congratulations to NC State and all the other teams for such a great showing of the Triangle region.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella followed by, I mean, mayor Portem Garamella followed by councilmember Johnson. Okay, councilmember Johnson followed by myself.
No comments.
Okay, I have a few comments. I want to wish a Happy Eid Mubarak to those who do celebrate. I want to say a big thank you to Sergeant Grady for organizing an informative pinwheel ceremony last week to bring awareness to Child Abuse Prevention Month. We had most town departments represented along with many Wake County staff and Sharon Hirsch of Positive Childhood Alliance NC, Indian Creek Trailhead. It was a very meaningful ceremony. A second thank you and kudos to Leslie Haney for organizing our very first peeps in the park last Thursday. Once again, teamwork makes the dream work. I saw numerous team members from various departments contributing to the wonderful event for our, all our families. I especially enjoyed the petting zoo and the Morrisville branded yo-yos. I had not done a yo-yo in a decade or so and it's like riding a bicycle, comes right back. I want to say thank you to Susan of Wake County Parks and Steve Dekinson of our Public Works for organizing and paddling with us for our very first Lake Crabtree litter sweep by canoe. It was a little chilly and windy, but that did not deter us, nor Michelle Wright and Donna Catalini of our mess committee either. Don't forget to drop by Church Street Park tomorrow afternoon for our Green Day event where you can shred confidential documents, recycle laptop computers and dispose of anything with a plug except washers, dryers, ovens, refrigerators and pianos. You can also safely dispose of batteries and prescription medications. And last but not least, you can help fill the town's public works department truck event as part of the Green Day. Please bring non-perishable food items to donate to Goodwill Industries of Eastern North Carolina and help those most in need. That's it, between 3:00 and 7:00 PM tomorrow at Church Street Park. Next person to speak will be councilmember Fender, followed by councilmember Rao.
I have no comment.
And councilmember Rao, you're not going to leave me the only one, are you?
Well, moving, moving forward, I'm going to make my comments what I call highlights of just two things or three things that I want to share with my colleagues and the public, which I think are relevant. The first thing is I did want to wish everyone an Eid Mubarak, all the Muslims out there, and Happy Ogadi to our Telugu and Indian community. And the UNC Holy Moly event was a really awesome event that I was able to tell my family and speak at. That was at UNC. But I have two things I want to share with the council and the public. The first is on May 15th, I'm hosting an AI summit with John Chambers who ran Cisco and he's now a venture investor and he's going to be talking about AI and our future and it's going to be attended by startups and investors and it's going to be a really, really great event. So it's going to be at the formerly Triangle J. We're going to bring him virtually, so I'll be sending everyone, I'd love to have you all there to get his insights. And the second thing is economic development. I did mention pickleball and carry, but I just wanted to make a start, a comment about startups. I was at the Durham Startup Summit today and there was literally hundreds of companies there from around, you know, Morrisville, Cary, Raleigh. And I just really think as we look at the budget and we look at our economic development, I really think the council needs to consider, you know, the fact that we're missing out on the boat of these small companies. People are not just coming to Morrisville for these events and I think it's really important that we have, whether it's incubators for our downtown, if you're an entrepreneur and you're listening to this on the stream, email us or our developer about, or our town manager about coming to Morrisville so we can have a vibrant place. But, and I just wanted to say that because I feel like we're such an innovative town. I want to steal the mayor's address. I mean, he often says we're innovation's home address and we have a lot of innovation happening here, but we need to make sure that we're bringing these innovative companies here to the area and I feel like we're missing out on this opportunity. And I just wanted to vent and share that with you all because I'm getting frustrated and I think it needs to change. It needs to change now, it needs to change this year and we've got to figure out a way to make it happen. So we'll talk about that during the work session on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Town manager Zudema, anything from staff?
Just a couple calendar items, mayor. As a reminder, council is invited to join the department head team this Thursday morning at 8:00 at Historic Christian Church for a little bit of breakfast and just some time together. And that'll go from 8:00 until 9:00 and then we'll begin our meeting after that. And then as a reminder, we do have a work session Thursday evening that'll include budget work session and also roundtable. So you have that packet now, came out today. Again, I appreciate your patience with that, wanted to make sure we had the right information in that for you. So we look forward to that conversation with you on Thursday evening and was mentioned earlier, but again, to highlight it particularly for the public, the next council meeting will be on a Monday, April 22nd rather than the 23rd because council and several members of staff will be headed to the North Carolina League of Municipalities, City Vision and Winston Salem.
Excellent. Thank you very much for all that. And now we are adjournment. I'd like to thank everyone for attending this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again, as was mentioned, on the 22nd, which is a Monday. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@morrisvillenc.gov or visit www.morrisvillenc.gov/council for additional contact information. Is there a motion and second to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Fender, a second from councilmember Skrogan Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 6-0, it is 9:03, we are now adjourned. Thank you.